Good afternoon. Want to call in session, the March 7, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And certainly recognize all of you who are here with us today to, I think we have some recognitions as a part of, some early part of the agenda, and I know we've got a couple of hearing items, so we want to welcome you all. Also, recognize this is the California Arbor Day today, so if you haven't already planted your tree, you still got time while the sun's still up. And we'd note that it's also the 305th anniversary, I think, of the founding of the Sacramento Tree Foundation, so little tidbits of information. And with that, then, I would just welcome you all, and if you wish to address this board, and Flo will go into detail, but certainly feel free to fill out a speaker identification form, and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time if you intend to speak to the board sometime during the board session today. And with that, then, I'll turn to our clerk to call the roles, establish a quorum, and make some announcements, and then we'll dive right into the agenda.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 10, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff when the chair calls your name. Please come to the podium. Please take a moment to silence your electronic devices as well.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Mr. Leonard, would you please, a pleasure to lead us today, please. Thanks.
... of the United States of America, and people of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have consent calendar, and we'll go and see if there's any items to be continued first, Flo, and then we'll take items people wish to address from members of the board.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 23, you are, for item number four, you are adopting an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.25 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board. You waived full reading on this on February the 7th. And also, I just want to make a note for correction, on item number 15, you are acting as the board and the Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency. That's just a note correction that we'll make on the action summary.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, turn to my right first, Ms. Frost, any items you want to pull off consent? Okay. Ms. Peters?
I have a couple of items. I'd like the record to reflect that I'm recusing myself on items 3 and 15 due to a business conflict.
Okay.
And then, I would like to talk about item 14 briefly. This is the Carmichael P. bid, and the section on page 3, the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, it says, "If county policy resulting from the April hearing is contrary to the provisions outlined in this agreement, the agreement could be amended to be consistent with a policy established by the board." I'd like to change the wording in that sentence to, "If the county policy resulting from the April hearing is," rather than "contrary to," "less than the provisions outlined in this agreement, the agreement strike could, insert, will, be amended to be consistent with policy established by the board." Okay? Thank you.
So noted. Okay. Any other items?
No.
Okay. All right. Ms. Kennedy? Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like the record to reflect a no vote for me for items 7 and 8.
Okay. All right, we'll note that. I do think on item, if I could, just to turn to item 8, I did note that, and, excuse me, on item 7, that we need to remind folks that contract authority is still vested with board supervisor authorization, and whether it's this or any other contract, and sometimes there's explanation for retroactivity, but I think for the sensitivity around that particular item, that someone should have been well apprised that, you know, to have board authority, whether there's any cost associated with, to the county or not, so.
Understood. We will follow up.
Okay, great. All right, I would like to pull off for just a brief discussion, item 15, and make a comment on items 13 and 17, if I could, so maybe you can call 13 first, and we'll hold 15 for a moment.
Item 13, approve First Amendment to Agreement with College Oak Towing for Vehicle Abatement Services.
Okay. As I understand, this contract is for additional services, particularly as it relates to large vehicles, recreational vehicles, boats and trailers, that are difficult to get tow operators to, one, to tow, but also then to store and dispose of, and I'm supportive of that. What I wanted to note, I was in a meeting last week with sheriff's representatives and representatives from the City of Iltin, the mayor, and the city manager, and we were talking about just a specific situation on their city streets, but my understanding is, out of that, that the sheriff has a tow contract for vehicles that they do tow, but they haven't been able to secure a contract for these types of vehicles under the sheriff's authority, again, requiring this board approval, but I don't know what the distinction is there, some is obviously code enforcement, it can be on private property, I guess it could be on, potentially on the public streets. I'd like to see us merge those up and have an item get back to us, so that if they need authorities to act either in the public rights of way and/or under some of the authorities, if we have this current agreement that we're going to be supplementing, then we ought to piggyback on that or have code enforcement then work directly with Sheriff's Department in those areas, either where we have contract or the unincorporated area of the county, so, and that was the conversation we had with the City of Iltin, so, because my understanding is they do not have a current contract under sheriff's authority for.
That's correct, and we'll work with them.
Okay.
And if you need to merge, we'll come back to you.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Don. Okay, let's take item 17 for a comment, then call 15 for a discussion, please.
Item number 17, approve the addendum to the final environmental impact report for the North Vineyard Station specific plan and Elder Creek Phase IV Improvement Project.
Okay. I just, here, I just want to offer certainly a comment of thanks. This has been a long journey to actually have before us the actual project, this board over the course of many years now. It's been 20 years since some of the initial discussions about the creek realignments, the working with the communities, the affected property owners, and I know the Department of Water Resources, along with County Council, and the Planning Department have been on point at different junctures of this, but I want to certainly acknowledge Michael Peterson and George Booth and his folks, and then, obviously, in County Council's office, Keith Floyd and others who have assisted over the years. This is, again, a much-needed public works project, but one that had a lot of sensitivity because of landowners affecting folks who have current homes and properties that have rural development on them, barns and outbuildings, and yet, there's upstream and downstream development and the need to do some alignment here. And then, also, run the gauntlet of various permitting agencies in order to get the necessary approvals to actually construct a project, and so I want to thank our leadership, certainly from the Executive's Office on down, for their work on this project. And, again, this is, you know, an environmental impact report amendment, but the stack of material behind it was about six inches thick relating to some of the previous EIRs and so forth, so, again, just want to acknowledge that and certainly appreciate all the work that's taken to get this done over the last two decades.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. And then lastly, we can call item 15.
Okay, for item 15, you are acting as the board and Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency, authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the master inter-agency project agreement to transfer, allocate, and expend all unobligated bond proceeds pursuant to Health and Safety Code, and approve the bond expenditure plan.
Okay, thank you. Since we last had this on our agenda, I did have an opportunity to meet with county staff, and I think some of the discussion and the revisions are reflected in the staff report itself, but just note that, obviously, this is a one-time pool of money that's available for a variety of infrastructure and other related work, primarily at Mather, but some of that retained for McClellan as well. I did want to note and call out, I think it's very important, that this scope of work and the proceeds will actually assign some funding to begin to do the scoping and some of the preliminary planning for the Douglas Road Extension Project, which we've had conversation during the planning of Mather South. That's included $100,000 for that. Also, there's a funding for the additional, it was talked about in last week's session, of fencing to secure some of the areas where the vernal pools are, and again, in addition to money that was identified previously, and I want to note that, and I thank certainly our folks with Economic Development and Parks for, and planning for their work on this. I wanted to call forward, though, a couple of items for maybe future discussion, one being, the funding is still available for low to moderate income housing assistance, either at Mather or McClellan, and.
Don, I'm sorry, since you're going into such extensive discussion, I'm going to step aside.
Okay, all right. I won't be long, I'm sorry. Just want, I wanted to get a couple things on the record. And Supervisor Peters did recuse herself previously, so. On that, I know that, as we're talking about the Mather Community Campus, and certainly the partnership with the City of Rancho Cordova on Veterans Housing, the Veterans Village Project out there, and what might else might occur as we talk about some of our services for those that are in need of housing and homeless programs, I would make sure that this money is, you know, kept with a pretty good asterisk beside it, so that we know that we can look to this as a potential source for at least working to make improvements at Mather and/or McClellan, it's available in either case. And I would ask that we involve a redevelopment agency in this regard, the housing authority. Also wanted to call out that the Mather Development Assistance, which is, again, set aside, there were some previous projects, we had the discussion with staff, and they were looking at, I think, some airport-related improvements, including the EVA reimbursement for building demolition, and some improvements that were, we were promised that would occur, and there were some obligations that fell down towards the county relative to some frontage improvements, and so, I guess, I'd like to see those, you know, once we've been able to refine those, I know Chris Bohulie and Mike Penrose and others were talking about working with our staff, and one of those actually had a timeline for this year, but the funding wouldn't be sufficient, so would hope that we would see that back at a future date. And lastly, now, this is more for the Exec's Office, it goes to an item we heard last September on Mather, and I know I raised it certainly in briefings with you, but I do believe that the sale of Mather properties, that was shown as a return, the Bell Brothers' property, to the General Fund of $235,000, and I do believe that those are one-time sales and that those investments, and we certainly, this board will have to weigh in, decide what we want to do, that we need to have a conversation, and I've carried that item forward since last September, I think at the time when that sale was consummated, there was some understanding that that would return to the board, so if it's going to be in budget this year, because we have another pending sale that could be, you know, 10 or more times that amount, and rather than having those monies just go to the General Fund, and again, the conversation we had a week ago about TO tax, that somehow we got to recall that money, we have a lot of work to do at Mather, we're 23 years post-closure, and, you know, the monies that we've invested certainly has shown potential for recovery, we're putting these monies back into any number of projects which have competed fairly over time for infrastructure and/or above-ground improvements, and I guess I would want to have that conversation before it just gets assumed that the sale of properties, both the one occurred last September, but the one that is contemplated again, in, you know, not too distant future, that those monies would be talked about for investment in Mather, and whether they're infrastructure, or in the community campus, or other needs out there, headquarters, you know, rebuilding that, for some other development, working with the City of Rancho Cordova, whatever it might be, and again, we have good folks, Economic Development and our Municipal Services side of the house, that are familiar with some of those conversations, so I would ask that you would get back to us on the Bell Brothers' sale, which was $272,250. And, you know, how that got either obligated or not, but I know I raised the issue last fall, and then, secondly, with the pending sale of the Fumoya property, which, again, is many times that amount, that we at least have this board have a conversation about where we want to see that money placed, so. Okay, good. Thanks. All right, that's all I have, but again, thanks to staff for the work on this, and again, I think it shows good progress, and actually, we include the extension of the Zimpano Dale work as well, let's see where. All right. So we have the consent calendar, I had no one sign to speak, anyone here wish to address any item on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, then, we've noted recusals by Supervisor Peters, and two no votes by Supervisor Serna on respective items, and if there's nothing else, then we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Motion?
Move it.
Okay. Chair would second it, so it's moving second to approve the consent calendar with the noted exceptions, if nothing else, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and as Chairman said, Supervisor Peters recused from item 3 and 15, and Supervisor Serna recorded a no vote on items 7 and 8.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Okay, for item number 24, I do need a motion to drop this item from the agenda, it's a service award for Mr. David Constant.
Some of.
Second.
Okay, move the second in. Set.
Did someone say wait?
Wait, yeah.
Are you, Mr.?
You need to get a chance, it's different items. There's different items. You get your chance.
What item do you want to speak to, mister, sir? Which item, you know, which item did you sign?
It's off agenda.
Off agenda.
Oh, off agenda, okay, all right, that's okay, okay. All right. So we have a motion to second on the item to drop item 24. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And for your next item, 25, it's the presentation of resolution honoring Pamela Gillyard on the occasion of her retirement of 26 years with the probation department.
Okay, call Chief Seal down, I know I have a board resolution, I don't know if you want to make some comments, and then I'll come down whenever you're ready, Lee.
Sure, no, well, I'd love to invite the chair down to join me. Thank you, members of the board, Lee Seal, Chief Probation Officer.
Where's our recipient?
Well, I'll invite her down right now.
I can say, "Good job."
Good job. I'm not Pam. Can we turn this around this way? This might be better. And if I may. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon and have the opportunity to honor Pamela Gillyard on 26 years of service to the probation department. She retires in just a few days. I've had the pleasure of knowing Pam since right off the bat. She's someone who has been willing to come in and have honest, helpful conversation, share her perspective, always something valuable, so much knowledge about the department, and be direct with leadership and management, and that's something that I've said before in this setting, that is, you find increasingly valuable, because otherwise, you can be trapped in the cocoon of a small world, and she's someone who hasn't hesitated to knock on the door and help me break out of that. As you all know, among the many things that I appreciate about Pam, such a beautiful smile. I have to say, if there's one thing that I think of when I think of Pam, always a smile, no matter what the topic, too. As many of you know in the audience, she served in a union representative role, and she did a good job at that, but she was almost too nice, just because, just always smiling, even as we talked about difficult things. So with that, I'm going to keep it short, because I do want to read this resolution, it has some really great, great pieces of information about her career. Whereas Pamela Gillyard will retire on March 10, 2017, following nearly 27 years of dedicated service with the Sacramento County Probation Department, and whereas Pamela began her career with the County of Sacramento as a probation assistant in May 1990, and was assigned to Juvenile Hall, now known as the Youth Detention Facility, she was promoted to Deputy Probation Officer in June 1991, to Senior Deputy Probation Officer on August 31, 1997, and finally, to Supervising Probation Officer on July 29, 2001, and whereas, in 1996, Pamela was selected to receive Probation Officer of the Year for the entire department, it's quite an honor. Congratulations on that. Throughout the years, Pamela has served in a variety of assignments at various locations, including the Youth Detention Facility, the Sandra L. Larson Center, the Warren E. Thornton Youth Center, Administrative Services, Adult and Juvenile Court, and Juvenile Field, and her professional accomplishments and contributions include having played a major role in the development of the department's first web-based application, the Juvenile Probation Information Program, JPIP, which we still use, participation in the multi-agency gang violence suppression unit, development, developing the Making a Right Choice Team Prevention Program, which was recognized nationally for its work with at-risk youth, working with school attendance reviewed boards, serving as a school probation officer, developing the department's first recruitment and backgrounds hiring unit and its processes, working with the Joint Labor Management Committee on Employee Evaluations, serving as the Vice President of the Department's Supervisors Union, and participation as a member on the county's child death review team, which, as we all know, that important work continues today as the Black Child Legacy Project. Whereas Pamela has been a dynamic leader, as well as a mentor and a friend to the many who have had the opportunity to serve and work with her throughout her more than 26 years of county service, whereas in retirement, Pamela will have time to devote to her new line of jewelry. I'm sure she has information about how that can be purchased. Her volunteer interest in different capacities, she'll spend more time with her children, Jalen and Jordan, are they here today?
Yeah, right there.
Okay, great. Well, we're going to probably invite you up, so get ready. And enjoy traveling and a more leisurely pace of life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby express its appreciation and thanks to Pamela Gillyard upon the occasion of her retirement, and offers its sincere gratitude for her many dedicated years of distinguished service, and further wishes her good health, much happiness, and many blessings to come.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I have to go get my notes.
Okay, go get your notes.
I just, wait. It was all of you that know me, know that I'm never, you know, at a loss for words, so I just kind of. I didn't know if that was going to, I always wanted to do that. Anyway, I just want to thank everyone, you know, for being here, and I sit back and I was thinking yesterday of when I first started this job, and I remember just starting out and go, "Oh, my gosh, I'm all grown up, I got a real job with benefits." And then I look at it and I go, "That seems like such a lifetime ago." But then, when I sit back and think about it, I started when I was 25, and then, it's 27 years, so it was a lifetime ago. I remember getting my first check and saying, "Oh, all this money on one check, and then I get another one in two weeks." So, you know, it was pretty overwhelming, but I'm just so glad that I was part of all the positive changes and things that the department has, and I look back and I realize that I actually, actually made 27 years. However, I wouldn't have done it if it wasn't for my family. You see, they're my biggest fans, and I'm so blessed. I know, I always wanted to do that. My dad passed away three years ago yesterday, and I know that if he was here, he'd be sitting in that front row, and he'd be so proud of me.
I am proud.
Well, thank you. When I sat down last night, and I was trying to think of that one person, of the people that really made a difference, that I can stand up and say, "This person changed my life, this person did that," but I can't, because I've just been so overwhelmed and so blessed with everyone that I've had the opportunity to meet. You know, I didn't know, I talk about my supervisors, I talk about my last great team that I had, I talk about the one that I had 15 years ago, or do I just talk about the people that did something that nobody ever really thinks about, like Guy, the electrician that came to my house one weekend and put my light in, because I told him that I could figure it out off YouTube, and he didn't want me to electrocute myself. Or the gardener that says, "You know, Pam," you know, and convinced me to plant real plants, because the fake ones were going to fade. Or it's the officer system that said, "Hey, you got this phone, and I can tell you how to do great selfies." So I look at it, and I think, you know, after everything that's gone on, I've just learned a lot from everyone, and I took something from everyone. And I think about it, and from my father, I took back his smile that could light up a room. My dad smiled, and you knew how he was feeling. My mom, for her wisdom and courage, I took from my brother his strength. My sister, her heart. My daughter, her joy. My son, his humor. My sister Angela, her grace. And my brother Nathan, his warmth. They're who I am and why I am. So everyone in this department has really, really meant a lot to me, and I can take something from everyone that I've met, some less than others, but I digress. But I'm just so deeply, and God has really blessed me, and I owe a great debt to everyone. I'm going to really miss the day-to-day interactions of just meeting and talking with everyone every day. This job has been a major part of my life, and I have met some great friends who I consider family now. So it's made this great journey for me a very good one, and I'm just so excited to my new adventure. I get to sleep in on Mondays and get paid. I get to sleep in on Tuesday. I get to sleep in on Wednesday.
Hope you wake up sometime.
I know. Did I say I get to sleep in? But spending time with my kids, you know, and working on my hobbies and my juries, and my biggest adventure is going to be thumbtack traveling. So what I'm going to do is I have a map up, and I'm going to put a blindfold on and turn around, and hopefully I don't fall, kind of working on the balancing, and wherever the tact sticks, that's where I'm going to visit next. And so I'm going to start in Sacramento area. I told you I was sleeping in, I can't go too far. As I told you, my mom is the wisest person I know and taught me so many things. She taught me to respect people and everyone, and it's not always about me, it's about them. But one of the things I'm always going to remember that she told me is that wherever you go, you always leave the room cleaner and better than when you came. So I just hope after 27 years that I left my room cleaner and better. Thank you.
Put you in the middle, one.
Yeah.
I'm based by it.
Thank you.
Do you want to invite any family?
Sure.
You guys are good.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thanks for your venue.
Thank you.
Thanks, good job.
Pam.
We have a, maybe we can take the off-agenda item quickly, gentleman's here, let him speak, and then we'll take the transportation item very quickly, so. Mr. Solah, did you want to address the board off agenda, so I'll invite you to come forward before we get into the next couple of items, we've got some pretty lengthy items, so.
I've been here for.
Tell us who you are, Mr. Solah, so everybody knows.
I've been here in Sacramento since November of 1963. You remember '63, don't you?
Yeah, I was in grade school, yes, I do.
Okay. Now, I want to know, this is my garbage that I put out in one week, $132. During the drought, I didn't have no grass, I just had dirt, because I need water, I save water. Now, and they only tell me, "Oh, you got the smallest garbage can there is." No, I don't. I got a garbage can that is about this tall, and you put this in here, here it is. $132, that's outrageous. I'm 85 years old, I'm an ex-marine. I'm on Social Security, and I haven't, we, the people, we have not gotten a raise since I ask them why, and they say, "Oh, the cost of living hasn't gone." I say, "What planet hasn't gone?" Here in California, everything has gone through the roof. I get family all over the United States. When they call me, the first thing that comes out of my mouth, "How much is the gas?" And they tell me. I can tell you state by state by state how much of the gas is gone. Why is it over here? Those guys up in the state capital get a free car, free gasoline, free license plate, free insurance, we don't get nothing. Now, for a month I've been on 311. Your people there told me to call 311. I've been calling them 311. They just put out the garbage and they'll leave it right in front of their houses, the garbage cans, empty for the whole week. I don't wanna go and knock on their door and tell them, because I don't wanna make enemies in my block. I've been there for 46 years. But that's what's going on. Garbage, mattress, everything thrown in there, you know? I call up and tell them about it. What's going on? How come? I wanna do this. They say, oh, we can't do that. I says, why can't we? Other states got it. I wanna have armored cars on the highway that doing 75, 80 miles an hour when it's raining. My life is under, I don't wanna go on the freeway anymore. I can't even get find out why there's so many cars out there right now. I never seen that many cars here. I lived down in LA and I didn't see that many cars down there. Where's it coming from? Nobody knows. But I'm interested is this. What am I gonna do about that $132 for one little garbage, for a little bag of garbage I put out?
Mr. Sola, one thing I suggest, and you may have talked to one of other members of board supervisors offices, but we can have Mr. Leonard who oversees our municipal services and solid waste recycling's under him. We can't take any particular action today, but I think you've made your point and I know there are some considerations for folks who don't generate green waste. We do have size of cans and again, it doesn't reflect obviously the usage that you have. But I would suggest if you are willing to, and we don't have to give it over the airwaves, but if you'll get a card from Mr. Leonard and give him your information to contact you, we can have somebody from solid waste look into, one, you know, maybe some, you know, possible adjustments because of the amount of usage. You still have to have garbage service, but maybe there's some other allotments that can be considered, so.
The thing is this here.
Yeah.
When you go around driving around and you see the lids open of the garbage.
Yep.
And the garbage is up here and the lid, the bottom, top of the garbage down there up there. Those are people who are living there, four or five families in a building to be able to pay the rent.
Right.
Just me and the wife. Just me and the wife. And I make a big lot of money. I make $1,100 a month from Social Security and I haven't gotten no raises in four years.
Four years, right. Well, let us see what we can do, again, you know, we appreciate certainly the fact that you and your wife came down here today. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the afternoon session, but we'll get somebody take a look at this and, you know, I don't know what adjustments could be made, but recognizing your situation and you reflect obviously other folks who are on fixed incomes who, again, you know, have lived here for a long time that may have the same issue. So I don't know if there's any way we can accommodate it, but.
But you're telling me you can't do nothing for me?
No, no, I didn't say that to you at all. I said, again, we can't do it today. I mean, but we've heard your plea, we need to get our folks to take a look at, because I know there are some adjustments that can be made.
They're welcome to come over to my house and they'll see, I keep my house clean. I keep the street clean, I keep everything clean.
Right.
That's the way it used to be over there. People used to pick up the garbage can, put it in the back of the house. Now they leaving them out there. There's one people over there, they got three of them right there across the street, got three more on the other side, people are stuck and they're leaving them there all week. I call, they told me to call, they told me to call 311.
311, right.
They haven't done nothing.
Okay, well, let's follow up on that too. So if you'll give your phone number to this gentleman here, you don't have to do it on the air, so everybody knows, and then we'll, and then we'll follow, we'll follow up and we'll see what we can do, okay?
I hope so.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you to your wife.
Everybody gets home safe tonight, don't be in a hurry.
Okay, thank you. You too. All right, thanks, Rob. Okay, any other items, call next item, please.
Okay, for item 26, it's the approval of the draft five-year transportation improvement and program guide for years 2017 through 2022.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Mike Penrose, Department of Transportation. We do have a PowerPoint with this, so we'll see if we can get that up. Oh, good, okay. So I'm here today to make a brief presentation of the five-year transportation improvement program guide for your board's consideration and direction today. Each year around this time, we bring this document forward. It presents our capital and maintenance programs that we anticipate for the next five-year period. We update it each year as the early years of the plan are probably the most accurate and the outer years are, you know, have some reduced accuracy, but we continue to refine it each year as we come through. So I'll take a moment here to kind of go through some of the highlights of it. I don't anticipate talking about every element of the plan in this PowerPoint. So the first thing, the plan details the capital improvement projects, roadway maintenance and traffic operation programs recommended for implementation in 17, 18, and the future years. It also describes the revenue sources utilized to fund projects and ongoing programs, describes the processes for selecting and prioritizing capital and maintenance projects. And upon approval of your board by the, of the TIP-G, it will conceptually approve funding allocations to specific projects, which is detailed in the document, authorizes SACDOT to pursue available project funding opportunities, because some of these are future funding opportunities that we have to pursue, grants and the like, approves priorities and funding allocations for pavement rehab projects, and adopts a multi-year capital improvement plan for Measure A and our county development fee program. So kind of a high-level overview of what's contained in the capital component of the TIP-G is we have 66 projects in that, in the plan, that with a total estimated cost for those of about $347 million over the five-year period. This pie chart just identifies the major funding sources that are included and you can see there's a variety of funds that are brought together for transportation improvements in Sacramento County. And you have familiarity with many of them, Measure A, development fee, financing districts, road fund, state and federal funds. The plan also includes the allocations that are being used for maintenance and operations. And this is intended just to highlight that in our maintenance and operation components of the Transportation Department, there are, again, many different funds that are cobbled together to accomplish the activities that need to be maintained and undergone through our maintenance and operations department. There are some recently completed projects, so year by year, we like to report on what was in the plan last year that's been completed before we talk about the new ones that are being included in the future years. And so in this, recently in this past year, we finished AC overlay pavement project that was multiple locations in the county. We completed intersection accessibility improvements, some culvert replacement work on Apple Road. We've done some streetlight conversion work in the avenues, also some sidewalk and ped work on El Camino and Hurley Ways, a streetlight project up in Rio Linda. We recently completed a job on Stonehouse Road out near Rancho Marietta and done a Watt Avenue sidewalk infill project. So those are projects that were included in the plan last year that have been completed or will be actually by June 30th of this year. So then we have a series of categories that I was just gonna try and highlight a few of the projects that are included in these categorical areas of our capital program. So one of them is major corridor improvements and that includes widening roads, doing interchanges, intersection upgrades, bike and ped facilities, those types of things. In the plan currently, there's anticipated about $276 million worth of improvement of projects that fit in this category. And some of the ones that we just highlighted, this is not all of the ones that are in the plan, but Hazel Avenue improvements, one of them's under construction now, Phase 2, another one would be Phase 3, we're working our way to the north up to Madison. Elk Grove Floren Road improvements, Gerber to Floren. The US-50 Hazel Avenue Interchange Project is included in the plan. Improvements on Power Inn Road, a couple of different projects on Power Inn Road and South Watt Avenue from Floren to Jackson, all projects that would be sort of the system expansion projects that are included in the plan. We have another category of bike and ped and ADA improvements. And this is like new sidewalks, intersection and signal upgrades, disability access upgrades, safe routes to school, those types of projects. And there's about $32 million worth of projects in this category. Some of the ones we just like to highlight, 47th Avenue pedestrian and bike improvements is in the plan. Floren Creek Bike and Trail, Excelsior Way Bike Project, which was mentioned earlier. Thomas Edison Safe Routes to Schools in the plan. Work on Power Inn Road, this is providing sidewalks between Lucreta and Floren, a very needed project. Hazel Avenue sidewalks on the north end of Hazel, Floren Road, as well as some ADA projects. So those are all, again, included in the plan. Another major category for us is corridor enhancements or this complete streets. And we have about $33 million worth of projects that are included in the plan. Some of the ones we wanted to highlight are Far Oaks Boulevard, Phase 1 and Phase 2, Phase 2's under, excuse me, 2 and 3, pardon me. Phase 2's under construction now and Phase 3 will be coming in a couple of years. Old Florretown Streetscapes, this would go with the project that was recently completed in Old Florretown about two years ago. And then Watt Avenue Complete Street Improvements. So those are projects that are in the plan. And then the plan also includes highway bridge replacement projects. And this is to replace or rehabilitate old bridges within the county. And we have about $85 million worth of projects in this category, primarily funded through highway bridge replacement funds, but we do have.
About 90% of that federal money?
Yes, yeah, it sort of depends. It's between 85 to 90%. Because some of these are what we would call off-system, which then have 100% match and others have are on-system and have a lower match to them. But it's a pretty aggressive program and an important program and one that we started about, probably about four years ago in earnest, in an area that we've had to be careful in terms of the delivery of it, because it does require a local match. And we're having challenges with local matches, which I'm gonna, I'll talk a little bit about later. But projects that are in the plan are Elk Grove Floren at Elder Creek, Twin Cities, Rio Linda, Franklin Boulevard, Ione, McKenzie, Jaboom, and Michigan Bar. So that's not all of them that are in the plan, there's actually 13, but we highlighted those as ones that are progressing. And then final category to talk about is the, is our rehab and safety programs. And this really includes pavement overlay, which is our primary part of it, but then we also do curb gutter and sidewalk repair projects, which each of you have seen in your districts. We do disability access upgrades, speed control, which is things like NTMP, those things are in the plan, and streetlight upgrades. And we have quite a few of the streetlight upgrades, as you've maybe been noticing, we've been going through the whole system in upgrading the lights to LED lights over time. So the major projects in this category is about $37 million worth of those projects in the program. And it's Fulton Avenue Overlay is in there, Drayton Heights is another neighborhood overlay project, Floren Road, which is new streetlight project, Floren area, pardon me, Rosemont area, streetlight project, curb gutter and sidewalk replacements, and then the NTMP. So those are all included in the plan. And let's just see if we can get this last one, there it is. So the last thing that I wanted to highlight and then hopefully be available to answer any questions and/or discuss specific projects if needed.
Mike, I just could, because as you talk about funding, because and there'll be other questions, I'm sure. In light of the impacts of certainly the, you know, recent storms this winter and obviously preceding winter, you know, talk to budget, but I'm just getting, any monies that we'll be able to draw down where we've identified, clearly identified damage to the roadway system that was beyond some normal maintenance or repair item, it seems to me we gotta be pretty aggressive in seeking reimbursement for those funds, assuming that they're available, those disaster funds. And they're not just limited to where you'd have a, you know, a bridge abutment washout or, you know, some culvert impact or, you know, it seems to me that, you know, some, without getting too much into the weeds, but some more detailed analysis, I mean, and we're gonna see the impacts, we're already seeing it as the drawings occurred, but the pounding that those surfaces have taken, but where they were inundated with water and we can actually make a legitimate claim that there were damages due to disaster declarations which are still open, both January and February storm events. And some of that might have been very immediate where you could identify and you got a picture of it and here it was, but I assume that the aftermath allows us to account for that. And I would, you know, ask that, one, and maybe we're already doing this, but secondly, I think that needs to be clear that, you know, we seek our fair share of reimbursement for the public street and drainage system, and if there's other impacts as well, that we're able to, you know, one, assess that and secondly, put a price tag on it and see if we can't get some of that funding to come back this way so we can actually, you know, make those corrections that were, you know, beyond the normal wear and tear, so. I don't know what the thoughts are along those lines. Yeah.
I didn't include that in part of the presentation, but just to respond to that point is that we are actively involved in the assessment and the evaluation, the quantification and the justification for seeking reimbursement revenues through the emergency relief programs. And DOT has been, our staff has been out all through the system and evaluating those things and looking at it in the variety of different ways that you can in terms of what's qualifying and not qualifying. We've yet to see any of that because it's still in the very initial stages.
Well, I know you haven't gotten reimbursement, but order of magnitude of damages that you...
Let me just ask quickly, because Res has been doing a lot of that work, if he's got an order of magnitude.
It's about $2.4 million overall.
Right now, we're at about $2.4 million overall, yeah.
For some reason, that sounds pretty low to me.
Yeah. Well, it's, that is what we're finding and it's documented and...
So that would include suburban and rural road sections that would need to be dug out and replaced and repaged and so forth?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, they're major areas that we've been able to identify. A system-wide discussion that says, because of the rains, we've had potholes that have come up all over the place is not something that's easily quantified. So this is where shoulders have been removed or...
I could quantify it.
Yeah, I know you could.[1523.23][1523.23](Laughter)
If it works, I'll help.
Write that report. We can put a number on it. But, you know, one of the things that, one of the pushbacks you get through this whole, you know, emergency thing is the issue of you had road systems that were in very poor state of repair before and now you're getting some rain on them and you can't, you know, we can't get all that. So our guys are trying to go through those area where there's been measurable, identifiable damage that we can say with the water. A lot of that's been, there's been standing water and those types of things.
Yeah, well, and to the standing water, I know Supervisor Serna wants to weigh in too, but we've got, for example, New Hope Road's still standing in water. We're gonna talk a little later today about Lambert in the vicinity of Twin Cities Road and Bruceville and other areas in that part of the world, but I trust there's been areas out in Rio Linda, you know, where inundation, and it may have been for a matter of days, more than hours, but where we've had weeks. And, you know, to say that the system, you know, may have been not in, you know, in perfect repair before it went into, I can't imagine that roadbeds sitting underwater for weeks at a time. It may save the traffic wear and tear, but certainly that can't be helpful. And those types of things, I would think, once we get a chance to assess that and, you know, and I think, vibe is so, where people, where areas have been flooded, you know, it wasn't just temporary, even out in Wilton, when you look at what happened in Jeffcott Road and, you know, we just repaved Green Road last year and it sat underwater for several days. And so I think those are types of things where, again, we don't wanna, you know, push the margin too much. On the other hand, I think if we can legitimately make the case that, you know, and we can look at that rather than just saying, oh, well, we'll make do.
We're not saying we'll just make do, just so you know. And those areas that have gone under, we're able to do a more extensive review where we can say it's been underwater for, but it's comparing kind of a heavy rain to just the road system.
Right.
Is a little bit more challenging, but.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad you brought this up. I guess my question is a little more specific to what's before us today, Mike, and that is, at one point, if at all, does your staff look at the roadway damage that has occurred? And I assume you use a PCI metric for some of that. But at what point, after a series of events like we've had, do you consider a recommendation to modify the TIP-G so that we actually begin to see the project appear for the five-year improvement plan?
So.
Outside of whether or not we get federal, you know, emergency funds, but at some point, I imagine all these different needs, whether they be bridges or the surface conditions of our roadways, large and small, at some point, they cross a line and they graduate to the point of being on our radar, collective radar for, to be fixed, right?
Yes, yeah. And so in answer to that, it's typically each year we're looking at that and saying, out of the network system, what roads do we, do we need to get included in kind of getting in line? Because we have, if you, if you look to the document, we can get into the point that's in the pavement maintenance section of the document, it has a, essentially a backlog and I don't need me to take you through every line of it, but it identifies major arterials as well as neighborhoods that are all ones that are on our radar. And what we do each year is we're looking at adding to that. And so if you go to the section just as a starting point, and there may be roads that are not on here now that we need to be adding, I know that we may talk about a couple of those today.
You're at B1?
Yeah, I'm at B1, yes. And then you go into page six, excuse me, it starts on, yeah, page six, no, pardon me, page eight in that section. So this identifies a number of future, we called it future overlay candidates, and we don't have anywhere near the revenue we need for this, which I know your board knows. The, and so if you go to the section, just as a starting point, and there may be roads that are not on here now that we need to be adding. I know that, that we may talk about a couple of those today.
You're at B1?
Yeah, I'm at B1, yes. And then you go into page six, excuse me, it starts on, yeah, page six. No, pardon me, page eight in that section. So this, this identifies a number of future, we called it future overlay candidates. And we don't have anywhere near the revenue we need for this, which I know your board knows.
This is a measure B list.
Yeah. And more. And frankly, the ones that are on here are ones that, that we've done some investigation on or we've received complaints on or have surfaced high enough in just our normal review to say, we need to get these into the queue. But there's more, right? We've got, we've got, you know, we have a 5,400 lane mile system. And so anyways, this is a starting point Supervisor. And, and then if you go beyond and you go to page, I think it's page 16, you'll see that we've identified whole neighborhoods, which is more than neighborhood areas that also are in great need. We try to include what we think the PCI is, which you just referenced, as well as many of these have an estimate. Not all of them do, but many of them have an estimate. So this is the beginning of a prioritization. And then we typically look at this as we go forward. We say, what sort of revenue opportunities are available? For example, if it's federal funds that we might be using, it limits which roads we can do. There's some of those things, so.
So is this, is this the time, Mike, that we would offer respectful feedback to you about what we, the five of us, think about candidate roadways and bridges that we think need to, again, graduate to the point of?
Yes, yes, this would be perfect for that.
Okay, well.
I think I know that you might have one for me at least.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna interrupt.
Yeah, did you wanna go ahead and finish real quickly? Then we'll go down the line here.
Okay, that sounds great.
So go ahead and finish it up and we'll come back.
You'll be hearing from me in a second.
Okay, good. And you can't list every street in your, in your district.
Oh, try us.
I'm just kidding. The needs are just so tremendous out there. I think all of us know that, so. So the things that I wanted to just touch quickly on here and the challenges and opportunities that without, I know this isn't a budget hearing, so I don't anticipate going through the Department of Transportation's budget overall. But what I wanted to highlight for you is that, that, and we've expressed this, I've expressed this at the board more than once. Over the past three years, we've seen significant reductions in the gas tax that comes to the county. And as such, that's affecting a lot of things. It's affecting our basic programs in terms of our street patching and our, you know, drainage cleaning and signal maintenance and all those types of things, as well as it's affecting our capital programs. Because we typically look to that revenue source to act as a match. Not on everything, we use other revenues to match, but it's one of our primary matches. So it's down over the past couple of years to the tune of about $9.4 million from what we'd seen in 14, 15, which is about a 30% reduction. And, and is really beginning to cramp our programs going into next year. So we're, we're actually seeing a budget shortfall that we're projecting into next year that is on the order of maybe $6.5 to $7 million right now. And that's not completed yet. But that's, that's a gap that we're seeing because of the reduction in the gas tax. And as I said, it's, it has the potential of impacting all of our programs. Not only our matching for, you know, a federal grants or state grants or any of those types of things, as well as our basic programs going forward.
Isn't it better said though, reduction in the revenue from the gas tax, right?
That's correct. Did I say that wrong? Sorry.
Oh, you said the reduction in the gas tax and.
It's the revenue to the gas tax. Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you very much. So it's a significant problem and we didn't, I just wanted to highlight that today because it affects what's shown in the plan here. So we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about priority streets that you'd like to be brought forward for street maintenance. And a key component of us being able to address those and put them in the plan and do a project relates to our gas tax availability. That's not the only funding source, but it's one of our primary ones. So I just, as I said, I wanted to highlight that for the board today in this context. The second thing that I wanted to bring forward, and this is, these are numbers again that this board has heard more than once, is that we have about a $450 million backlog of street needs. And, and we don't have the revenue sources to go with it. Again, that's its own presentation and the impacts related to that we've made to this board. But I, I wanted to highlight that deficiency, which is a huge problem to us. These most recent storms that have come through have just exacerbated that even there. And then finally, I wanted to just briefly touch on what, what other funding opportunities may be available to us. They're not yet in our hands, but they're ones that we're watching very closely to see if it will affect what's in this program, as well as what we can do for our maintenance program going forward. And at the state level, your board is, has probably been seeing this, but there is, there are two bills that have been brought forward. They were introduced in December. And I know at least Supervisor Cerna has been engaged, at least in trying to respond to those bills and get people to take action on them. They're AB1 and SB1. They're basically very similar. And if those bills were approved, they would bring additional revenues to, to the locals. And in Sacramento County, that could be on the order of about $42 million in addition to what we receive now if approved, which is huge. It would solve that reduction that I just talked about that we've experienced over the past couple of years and allow us to grow the program, right? So it's super important. But it's a combination of a variety of different tax measures and other things to try and bring that money together. And, you know, I'm hopeful that something would come out of that, but there's no guarantee. They've been dealing with it for a couple of years with no resolution, as your board knows. At the federal level, the only thing that I've seen that, that maybe could be in play, but we don't know what the consequences of it would be, and that's a Trump infrastructure bill. We keep hearing discussion about that. We've yet to see anything, but we're, we are watching that to see if something might come forward. And then the last thing locally that I wanted to highlight, and it was mentioned earlier, is that it's, it's what we had called a measure B, was heard in this region in, in the fall. And it didn't, was not successful, but it was pretty close. It was very close. And so the potential going forward, maybe that there might be another measure B or a measure A that would be considered in this region, maybe in 2018, is another opportunity for us to be looking for potentially revenue that would come in to begin to solve this problem that we're talking about here. So that's, that's really all I wanted to bring forward. Be happy to take any questions or input as to projects that we may add to the plan or, you know, that kind of thing.
All right, well, let's just start down the row here. Start from the left this time, come this way and, and let folks weigh in and go down the line here. Phil?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mike, for the presentation. I think it's, it's pretty clear. The order of magnitude of the need, as well as the limitation of the resources to meet it. That seems to be pretty thematic with a lot of things that we do here in county land. One of the things that I did mention to you offline earlier this week was the current condition, in fact, even before the recent storms, the, the condition of Fruit Ridge Road, Nelson, of course, being the unincorporated part of the county. But it's, it's, that's a part of the county, city of Sacramento interface. It's got some very odd political geography. So I want to be clear, this involves both District One and District Two. District Two has the south side of the unincorporated part of Fruit Ridge Road. District One, the district I represent, has the north side. But that part generally from Highway 99 to Stockton Boulevard. And then you would have intermittent stretches where both sides would be in the unincorporated county. And then some parts would be in the south side of, the south side of the center line of Fruit Ridge Road, which would be all in, all unincorporated in District Two. So I would like to suggest that, that we begin to think about how we get the, that stretch of Fruit Ridge on, on the list. I can tell you, because I traverse that part of my district very, very frequently, that the roadway condition is not only extremely worn and pockmarked with potholes like it is in other parts of the county and other supervisorial districts, but the traffic volumes on that stretch are pretty, pretty, pretty enormous. As you begin to collect off the side streets to get to the interchange, it's no wonder that you begin to see a lot of long queues for the, for the light changes, whatnot. So it's getting a lot of traffic volume. The surface is very, very poor, in my opinion. Of course, I'd like to understand from an engineer's perspective how it rates compared to other priorities we have. And I know that's part of this exercise. But I wanted to make it public today that I think that that is a stretch of unincorporated, major, I guess we'd call that arterial. That deserves attention in the context of the TIPG.
Okay. And that, just so you know, that project will be added. I had an opportunity to look in advance because you had mentioned it. And it's not in our, our plan at this point, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
What he said.
Same road?
Yes. And, and I just wanna say thank you, though. You know, you and your staff are great at, you know, working with us all and seeing to it that, you know, the projects that we see are priorities. Because, I mean, I look at the list and these are all things that we've talked about for the last two years. It doesn't happen as quickly as we'd all like, but that's not your fault. It's the money flow. But I just wanna, you know, commend you guys for, for really being responsive to the needs of the district.
Thank you.
Well, I talk to you all the time, Mike, about my roads. So I, I, I think I'll just say thank you very much over the years. And particularly during this nasty rain, we've had, we've had so many potholes. And your staff, even though I call every day, is, is on them every day. And I think they're doing a really good job at getting quickly through the potholes. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
I just have one question regarding the PCI. On, on this list in B1, where it's listing all the roadway candidates and then it lists the PCI. And you said there were a lot more that were not on this list. But some of these that are listed here have like a 70 PCI. And then some of them have a 16 PCI. And so my question is, that must not, is that, is PCI the index by which you prioritize them? Or are there other priorities that get them on this, in this plan, on the page?
Yeah, and that's what I alluded to earlier, is that, that it's not only a PCI driver that got them onto this page, right? It's, it's where we've done either investigations, we've seen historical problems, or we've had inquiries about those segments, too, is one of the, one of the feeders that's on it. So the one that has a 70 PCI, that could be one of the major arterials. It's likely we would not take any action on that for a while, but it is on the list. Because typically for the arterials, we don't, we'll go down to about a 65 PCI before we begin to recommend an overlay. Neighborhoods, we go to a little bit lower PCI because there's not as much volume on them and as much traffic before we would recommend an overlay. So there's a, there's a few ways that they get onto this list. But just because it's on the list doesn't mean it's gonna move to first, so.
And are you, you're responding to people that are calling in and saying, there's a, the road is really bad here. But do we have, but you're also, also when our staff are like out on the road, they're, they're not out proactively looking. It's more of a response to constituents. Is that correct?
We have both. Right now, we're in a very responsive mode, but that's just part of what, what's happening with the system. But our, our folks who are actually running the road, we have supervisors that are running the system on a regular basis, that are doing evaluations and those types of things. So we have inputs that come from that. The other thing that I, I have mentioned in the board's heard just before is we do have a pavement management system and that we do an inventory of the roads so that we get an idea of where the PCIs are. And we're migrating that system actually to a video surveillance methodology so that we can get through each one of our roads about every three years to kind of get a data point on them. So there's a number of influences that bring them onto this. But this is not strictly an output of PCI, which I think is your question. Should we just go to, to the one that's an 18 and say, we're gonna do that first, then we'll go to 19, then we'll go to 20, you know, that kind of thing? It's, it's a little bit more of a hybrid approach that we take, which tries to match the, you know, the system, the road type, the volumes on the roads, the needs there, as well as the PCI, as well as the funding opportunity. When we're, when we have local funds, we can do work on any road. When we start to pursue grants, we have limitations on which roads we can apply those to. So we, we kind of mix those all together to get a priority set of roads year by year.
That you think you can do something about it?
That's correct.
Basically. I, I think I have a road, but I don't have the address. So I'll email you or connect with you.
Do, please. And I can, we can certainly get it on this list as a starting point, yeah.
Okay. Well, Mike, I would just say certainly ditto to thanks for the cruise, certainly during the storm season, for their response, responsiveness to recognizing that it's a big county. And as you said, you've got 5,400 lane miles that, you know, stretch from, you know, the tip of Sherman Island all the way to, you know, the northeastern and northwestern portions of the county. I would, as I asked about earlier, though, ask for maybe a report back later this spring as relates to, not so much the TIPG, but the storm damage final assessment. And then if there's, in respect to some of those repairs, it would seem to me that if we're gonna go out into, and whether it's in a suburban setting or it's in a, you know, rural road section, that we're gonna do some repairs that, you know, you can identify that relate to a storm. But there would be some, while you're out there, while you're mobilized, it would make sense to do other sections of either pavement or roadside shoulders or bridge abutments, whatever it might be, that those, again, might very well be candidates. And I, and again, I wanna certainly thank Mr. Gill. And certainly this board took the action last year to supplement for the second time only in all the years I've been with the county to actually supplement the road fund with general fund dollars. And last year, it wasn't quite $2 million, it was about 1.4. 1.4, and it was $2 million the year before. It would seem to me that with the storm damage and certainly with, obviously the, you talk about the shortfalls, but again, where we can make a difference with the dollars we do have and use, use those strategically. I guess I would just like to, as we do the storm damage assessment, though, before we make budget decisions for the year to come, that we have some assessment. Because it might be that, that, you know, some of our decisions will be premised upon, one, obviously the priorities budget-wise in this entirety. But then areas where we're gonna go in, make the repairs, but that might be the best section of road for two miles surrounding. I mean, I don't know. I mean, again, I just, I, I'd like to see that, though. So we have some ability to weigh that. And I guess I'm kind of surprised that the storm damage is estimated at the number that Reza quoted a little while ago, would seem to me, when you look at just the size of these lists and how you can blow through 2.4 million pretty quickly and barely make a dent in any of the five supervisorial districts. I, I would like to make sure that from a disaster claiming standpoint, again, that, I'll say it one more time, that it's legitimate, that we, you know, be aggressive in seeking federal dollars where possible, recognizing, you know, under disaster declarations that, you know, may have some limitations. The other thing I would ask, though, and it goes to maybe off-system, but yeah, I know road maintenance can be, you know, shared between water resources and Department of Transportation and so forth, that some of the damage, I, I mentioned to you, I think the pictures actually got sent over this afternoon in one section on, on New Hope Road, where it's adjacent to the roadway. And, you know, sometimes when we go in to do repairs, we have coverage, because of storm damage and so forth, we can do those emergency repairs. But there's a short window on some of those things that relates to permitting and to coverage under, under CEQA, NEPA. And I guess I would ask that we be cognizant of that window, that if there are repairs that are either on-system or adjacent to system that, you know, again, roadside ditches serve as the drainage system in the, you know, rural portions of the county, that there are system improvements and repairs, more than improvements, but repairs, that we make sure that the coverage that otherwise might trigger a document, and I don't know a disaster declaration, what that coverage that gives us. But I think about sections along Twin Cities Road. And we have folks here this afternoon that'll be talking to the next issue on the agenda about, you know, flooding to their private properties. But to those public areas that were inundated, either for days, weeks, or even maybe a month or so at a time, I would like us to make sure that, that, you know, we don't get in some situation where we're gonna repair it, but then, you know, if we'd have done it 15 days ago, we'd have had coverage under disaster declaration and whatever might, windows that opened there. But now that we waited till this part of the year when either funding was certain or we were better apprised of damage assessment, that now we've gotta go through this long process that'll take us into the next construction year because we have to meet certain obligations. And so, again, certainly staying within the lines, but also recognizing that when you have these extraordinary circumstances, there are oftentimes at least some, some leeways given that allow us to go in there and make those repairs legitimately. And I would ask that we be cognizant of that and maybe come back to us sometime in, in the spring. And it may be budget-related, but also might just be timing-related that we have, you know, in order to do these things and to get the coverage under disaster declaration for permits and other things that would might otherwise be required, we can do them under this, but it's gotta be done in 90 days or 120 days or whatever. And so I'd like to know that. Because once those windows pass, then you're right back into this process that we have to go through all the time, so.
Okay.
There's no question the list is long. There's no question, the list is long, and I look at the pavement, and anybody drives the roads, folks that drove, get here today for this hearing or for other items on the agenda, you know, they're enduring the same things that we all are, and I guess we can do our best to keep the system, you know, passable and drivable, and hopefully we'll be able to find some resource to make some of the needed repairs, some that are long overdue, others that are a result of the tremendous storm damage that we've had this season, so. Anyway, thanks to your folks, and I guess specific questions I can take offline though.
Okay.
All right. So we need the, I don't know if anybody signed up, is there anybody here? I know most of you are here for the item 28, but is there anybody who wanted to address the transportation improvement program, five-year plan? All right, I'd seen none, had one time to speak, then I'll bring back to the board.
For the item.
Okay.
Second.
Moving second to adopt the recommendations by staff, and if there's nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Reza, Resalde, and others. Okay, we have a quick brief item, and then we'll get to item 28, so call next item.
Item number 27. Item number 27 is the request for a time extension for a property located approximately three-fourths of a mile east of the Elk Grove Florin Road in the Vineyard Community, and the environmental document is an addendum to the prior mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, you have a brief staff report, Leanne, on this?
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Moffett, your planning director. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. This item was originally approved by the board back in April of 2006. The rezone became effective, but the map was only effective for three years. Due to the downturn in the economy, there've been a number of administrative extensions of a lot of these maps. You've seen several of them, both by the state and by the local, and so therefore their map was expiring after about 10 years earlier this year. This is a vesting map, so it does have to come all the way to the board. So there've been quite a number of other maps that have stayed at the Planning Commission, but every now and again, your board is seeing these requests for extensions of these vesting maps. They are requesting an additional five years, and staff, the Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Planning Commission are all recommending approval. So the item is ready for your adoption, and the applicants are here in the audience.
Okay. Thank you, Leanne. Do the applicants wish to make any comments? Good afternoon. Just identify yourself if you could, please.
My name is Rick Ortiz.
Hi, Rick.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Been awhile.
Ten years?
No, not at all. Pretty close to that. No, actually, we paid our fees and submitted our application on March 11, 2016, and I met with you, I believe, in late March, early April of last year. And we're just here, as you know, the tentative maps were extended on multiple occasions by the state and other authorities, and we're just here to proceed with this development and.
Okay. You're okay with the conditions that are recommended?
We are.
The recommendation of staff?
Yes, correct.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Ortiz? Okay. If not, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I know one side of the speaker, and I wish to address item 27, the extension of the map for North Vineyard Green Zone 11. All right, seeing none then, I have no questions, and I would move the item.
Second.
Okay, let's move to second. Staff recommendation, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. Thanks. All right. I would note too, as we call the next item, if you, I know some of you plan to address the board after we have the staff report, and I know we have at least one PowerPoint presentation, and I've allotted some additional time for that, but if you want to address the item as relates to not just Point Pleasant, but any area, certainly in the county, but in the southern part of the county is the focus here today, would ask you to fill out speaker request form, and that way we can call upon you as we get down through the discussion here today. And I know some of you may have pictures and other comments you want to share, or just here to certainly lend support for some of the comments by others. So with that, I'll ask a float, please call the item.
Item 28, recommendations on flood protection measures for the community of Point Pleasant.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Good afternoon. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. Today's item is, the intent is to discuss some flood recommendations for the Point Pleasant community. Most recently, January and February, the community was impacted severely from two storms, repeat storms once in January, once in February, but that, the series of events has just highlighted the vulnerability to flooding of this community. And the intent today is to have some discussion of the flood situation down in Point Pleasant, a bit of what has happened in the past in terms of flooding, and then gets the direction from your board to pursue some remedies, some recommendations, and certainly to get input from the folks that are here in the audience. I do have a, call it a PowerPoint, so much as just a few graphics, which I'll use, but I did also bring in an additional handout that you should all receive a copy of. There are maybe a few in the back of the room that are left, but that's just a, I think, a more refined graphic that I think will serve well as we have some discussion further into the session. But right now, I've got just a real brief PowerPoint that's up.
Michael, just quickly with the graphic, because I saw some folks gathering, getting ones that came in. The identification for flooded structures and impacts, those are the ones that we're aware of. There may well be others that we aren't aware of, and some folks may be here today.
Absolutely.
So if you got left off here, it wasn't intentional, the idea was, is I think, to show some graphics of the geographic area for benefit of all, but also to identify at least those that we know who were flooded, but we know there was great impacts to the entire community, but I just want to let you know. So if we need to add a dot on the map, or two, or three, or four, we can certainly do that, that will help.
Absolutely.
Certainly support some of the things we're going to hear about today.
Yeah, let our staff know. Those are, those locations are what we are aware of, either through contact we've received or through our investigation field.
Thanks, Mike. Oh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since you were on, talking about that graphic, Mr. Chair, I wanted to get some clarification. I apologize if you already mentioned it, Michael, but the, and that's the, both the red, the larger red arrows and the smaller blue arrows are not in the legend?
Correct. I will, I will do some explanation of the graphic when I pull that up, and I'll do that after the few PowerPoint slides that we have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, so, let's get this going here. Trying to advance the PowerPoint. All right, thank you very much. All right, there's an on and off button. In general, the area that we are talking about today is the Point Pleasant, or the Beach Stone Lake Point Pleasant area. It's bounded in red here on this slide. In general, it's bounded to the south by Twin Cities Road. There's Franklin Road and the railroad tracks on the east. Hood Franklin, as you see, runs through towards the northern portion of the community, and then there's an old railroad embankment and Snodgrass Slough on the west boundary. That red boundary will be, become relevant as we get further into the discussion, but in general, this community is in the southern portion of Sacramento County, and it is at a location where it receives runoff from Morrison Creek Watershed, as well as the Kasoomis and McCombny Rivers, and that runoff generally collects, and as it tries to make its way through the system into the San Joaquin River into the delta, Point Pleasant has experienced some flooding because of that, because of its location proximity to those A little history, just brief history, I know that there may be another speaker who has more depth history. The community was, experienced severe flooding in 1986, 1997. Those were very large storm events due result of flood volumes in the Morrison Creek Watershed, and as well as the Kasoomis and McCombny Rivers. In addition, as I mentioned, that flow runs, must pass through the levied reclamation districts or to the southwest. That constrained flow tends to back up, stack up, and it backs up and moves north into Point Pleasant. And additionally, it backs up on the Union Pacific Railroad, which parallels Franklin Road and makes its way into Point Pleasant along the railroad tracks. Most recently, again, in January of this year, in February, almost a month, exactly a month later, the community experienced two storm, two flood events, not as severe as 1986 or 97, but certainly for the community in general, but for those specific folks who were flooded, it was extremely impactful. Just for a sense of relevance, this is the estimated floodplain from the January, February storm events of this year, just so you can see how much water, even in what might not be considered a record event, and I think you mentioned earlier, there's still areas down in the community that have, that's still water out there, it's just standing there. So this image gives you a sense of just the breadth of the floodplain even from the January and February storm events. And this is based on field observation and gauge data, mapped to the terrain. Now, this graphic here, the intent of this graphic is to show a little, a little bit closer up, the community of Point Pleasant, which is, you can see just north of Lambert Road at the top of the screen. And what we attempted to do was try to define some of the relative paths of flow for the water, but I'm going to actually not use this graphic. I've got the one that I handed out will be better for that discussion. Given the history of flooding here and the nature of its location, there have been a number of projects proposed to try to provide, you know, flood protection for the community. In addition, in, the Board of Supervisors established funds that were received from new development within the Morrison Creek Watershed, Lakeside, Laguna West.
Largely upstream, but you all.
Largely upstream, but in the watershed that contributes to the Point Pleasant community. So mitigation funds have been received and continue to be received with every new building permit in the Morrison Creek Watershed to go into the Beach Stone Lake mitigation fund. The intent of that fund was to contribute towards the larger, a larger flood fix for the Point Pleasant community, which was identified as a couple of potential ring, larger ring levy projects. This cost and scale of those projects, even at the time in the late 90s, was in order of 40 to 70, 80 million dollars, depending on the scope and scale. The contribution that would be coming from the impact fee and the mitigation contributions from development total, would have totaled no more than 7 million. Plus, there are still some additional fees as development continues in the Morrison Creek Watershed, but the most we would be looking at 13 million dollars ultimately, not adequate to fund such a large-scale project. And the difficulty in finding additional funding partners, or the ability to mitigate for such a project, made it difficult to continue pursuing that project, and the board did determine that rather than try to continue pursuing a large project, we directed staff to pursue smaller scale flood protection projects for, on an individual basis for In addition, the board authorized the use of that Beach Stone Lake mitigation fund to pay for flood insurance for the communities that, or for the properties that are in that red boundary. That's more or less the Beach Stone Lake mitigation area. So the funds that we've collected for mitigation from development are used to annually pay the flood insurance premiums for properties in that red bounded area. And after that, after that was authorized, subsequently SAFCA agreed to reimburse the county for those insurance costs. So at the end of the day, SAFCA funds the flood insurance policies for the Beach Stone Lake properties.
Mike, if I just could add to that, and that's the Sacramento Flood Control Agency. That was because of the impacts, again, it was debated at the time, but nonetheless, the downstream impacts of levy work that they did to further the areas that were, you know, inside the city of Sacramento, large parts, some in the unincorporated area, but up north, certainly north of Franklin, in the Freeport area, in the Valley High areas of the city of Sacramento, around the regional plant. And so as they fortified and improved some of the levy structures and made other improvements, floodwalls and so forth, that the downstream impacts, although I can recall the time, they were described as being minimal or marginal, and nonetheless, part of that decision by the SAFCA board at the time was to agree to cover the flood insurance premiums for the areas within the Beach Stone Lake space, and it didn't go to the areas east of Franklin at the time.
Correct.
And there was some discussion about that, but because of the improvement and the impacts thereof, so.
Yeah, the projects that you referenced, that SAFCA completed were in the Morrison Creek Watershed.
Right.
So there was that relevant connection, and the scale of contribution is, was approximately $2 million to be used to reimburse the county for the flood insurance premiums. And that, and that's what they continue to do today.
That continues to this day, yeah.
Correct. The difficulty is that the accrual of interest from that fund does not keep pace with the increasing insurance premiums, but SAFCA continues to reimburse the county annually for those insurance costs. In addition to funding the Beach Stone Lake insurance policies, in 2007, the board did authorize staff to try to pursue individual flood protection projects, identifying candidates for home elevation, with which we could try to use FEMA grant money to elevate homes above the floodplain, and also trying to pursue small onsite fixes, you know, berms or individual floodwalls, or some other means where at least structures could be protected. And there was effort from staff to do that. We did reach out and make contact with property owners that were interested. Difficulty with pursuing those really came down to the level of, there was a hold harmless agreement that was required by the county, associated with projects that we'd be doing on private property, and I think that the language in that hold harmless was probably a bit too constrictive for people's tastes, and that probably influenced, you know, folks in not pursuing forth with us any onsite fixes. In addition, we have pursued a home elevation with FEMA grant funding, and I believe that a few elevations have taken place over time in the community. I know the most recently, in 2016, we had gotten a grant award from FEMA for home elevation, and we did find some interested candidates. Unfortunately, as we found, much to the chagrin of those candidates who are interested, that benefit cost requirements on an individual project basis, as well as the inability for FEMA to approve elevating a structure on pad, on fill, precluded the use of the funding for those folks who did express an interest.
And that's an important point. Again, I know there are some in the audience, obviously, many who were at the meeting last summer, and I was in attendance as well, and we had the discussion, certainly we had the insurance providers, but also the cost benefit analysis, and I think, which, because you had some folks who were, you know, interested candidates who were, you know, certainly considering entering the program, and then, because either the depth of flooding and or whatever analysis was done, you know, on an individual basis, and then I think that became, you know, restriction and constraint for folks. And then the other thing is, is not everyone wants to put their house on stilts, and so, you know, the ability in a rural area maybe to actually pad up a bit, again, there's some practical, you know, challenges to that as well for other outbuildings and where your well and septic is and so forth, but because FEMA won't allow you to pad up, then it pretty much, you know, I think negates a lot of interest, or those that have elevated, either through new construction and or through the program, but on a very limited basis. And I think it's been a bit frustrating to folks that, you know, even last summer, I know, I was caught a bit by surprise when I got in that discussion, I think as were maybe some of the folks that were, obviously making the presentation, that that had become a real barrier relative to the FEMA requirement. So now, my understanding is that there may be the ability to look at a given area where you could have some more, you could actually do the cost benefit to do it on a more generalized area, you still have the difference between a pad, though, and, you know.
Correct.
You know, some sort of structure to elevate up out of the water, so.
Correct. And over the past 20 or so years, when we've pursued and been awarded FEMA grants for elevation, we have carried out a number of home elevation projects across the county, probably in every single district. But depending on which grant, the requirements are not necessarily consistent. There was a period where we would be able to group homes and collectively have that benefit cost meet the requirement from FEMA's standpoint, but in the case of this most recent grant, we didn't have that opportunity. That wasn't, there wasn't an allowance for that. So that can help you with, you know, pulling in homes that may not on their own qualify, but that is subject to the specific terms and confines of an individual grant.
And that may be, just while we're at this point, just put a marker on that, something that legislatively, I know we were talking about, you know, again, counties certainly beyond ours that have been affected, certainly agricultural areas where maybe some sort of consideration under the, you know, flood insurance program, but also buildings that, you know, are built at grade because they function, you know, in a capacity that supports the agriculture, but it's impractical to, you know, get them out of the floodplain, so to speak, because, you know, where they're located and what they provide by way of, you know, both the agricultural economy, but other, you know, service-related elements. It might be with regards to this, that we want to, particularly, I think, some of the things you're going to point out in a moment, with the, you know, the, I think, growing impacts of both the Kasoomis and McCombny watersheds and, you know, what's happened this year, and we're going to see some, you know, damages and hear from folks that have been, you know, directly impacted and had to live, live through it and continue to live through it. But where we might be able to, once again, approach, look at a grouping and go through our legislative representatives, our congressional representatives, and see if there isn't some way to appeal to FEMA officials and others who would be. way to appeal to FEMA officials and others who would be in a decision-making role on this, as to an area in our county that's been impacted, not just by localized impacts, but obviously things that are way out of our control or our jurisdiction, that could be as far upstream as the top of the Sierras and all the way down, quite a ways down through the Delta, in areas that aren't even necessarily adjacent to the county. And so I guess that may be something we want to take a look at, Michael, as to if we get some interest as we talk about this today and give some direction, that maybe to look at a geographical area that would allow us to group homes in the sense that we could maybe go to FEMA and say, here's what we want to do in this area, and it's not just because of building. Some of these folks have been there for generations, but because there are impacts that we're seeing with more frequency and greater impact, and folks that maybe not been flooded in 86 or 97 have gotten flooded twice on two occasions this year, and people are concerned about runoff later this spring, if they can't hold the water back in the McCombny system, and obviously Casumis system doesn't have any dam controls on it. So again, I offer that as a comment as you just move along in your presentation, because that may be something that we can, on a broader scale, as a county, initiate, and what chance of approval, I don't know, but it may be worth pursuing.
No, I agree. Generally speaking, California is a contributor to the overall flood insurance program versus a drain on it, if you will, I guess, because if you look at hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, et cetera, that's more or less from the same fund that FEMA has in terms of paying for insurance than paying out claims. And in general, California pays in more than it takes out. So that is one of several points that we would introduce into that discussion to try to get some leniency and some flexibility in those.
Well, and help us help ourselves, so to speak.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So let me, I'm going to ask that they turn off the PowerPoint, and then I'm going to put the graphic handout that I.
Distribute.
And just note that it's, I think it's Glanville track, not Granville.
What's that?
I think it's Glanville. You had an R and a V.
Misspelled. Yeah, that, once that got to me, it was too late to make the change, so.
So they left you to have to explain it on, Michael.
This was something that was, we just put together this morning to make sure, I wanted to get some clarity.
That's good. Now, this is helpful to have the exhibit, though.
I appreciate the editing and the typeface.
Well, if I didn't say it, I'm sure it'd all, everybody else would know it is, so.
Yeah. I know Walt will let me know for sure. All right. So I'm going to attempt to point out some things on this. So the purpose of this slide, and if nobody has a copy, we had a few left, we can produce as many as anybody needs. And here's sort of the heart of the Point Pleasant community, Lambert Road, Interstate 5. The circles that you'll see, the colored dots and circles reflect the structures and/or garages that we're aware of firsthand that flooded. Those with the yellow circle around them are those that had flooding twice this year, once in January and once in February. I think there are five houses that were flooded twice, excuse me, five houses that were flooded twice, six total, and I think similar with the garages. Most of them are within that Beach Stone Lake mitigation area, but there are a number of them on the east side of the Franklin Road Railroad, Union Pacific Railroad alignment as well, that I think was expressed, and we're surprised when some of those were flooded. So looking at this map and trying to explain, I'll try to explain the way water by gravity should flow, and then what we saw with the actual events in January and February. If you can see the darker blue arrows, you'll see them running along here, going through the Stone Lake, coming up from the McCombny River and the Casumis River. Runoff normally will flow through these corridors in between these orange lines, those are levies. So that runoff has to pass through these levy reclamation districts. And under, you know, normal flows or small storms, normal rainfall, that will happen without much impact. In January and February, given the volume of rainfall and the fact that we had warmer storms come in with almost record snowpack in the Sierras, we had a much larger runoff volume impact, in particular from the Casumis River and then McCombny Rivers. And when that happens, as it did in January and February, the volume that comes through here is far more than the rivers and sloughs can carry in between the reclamation district, in between those confined levies. And it stacks up. So it stacks up here and back here, and what we saw was that we had essentially water backing up and pushing its way north along the Union Pacific Railroad, making its way into Point Pleasant through the existing culverts that go under the railroad and under Franklin Road. And as this water stacks up here, it also pushes north along Snodgrass Slough, and it goes over Lambert Road. There's a bridge here with a series of floodgates intended to hold water back to the south, but this water rose up high enough that it went up and over Lambert Road, flowing into the Stone Lake area and coming around to Point Pleasant from the west.
Till it actually reversed course.
Yes, yes. So it stacks up here as it's trying to push its way down into the Delta, to the south, it sort of stacks up and holds there until it's able to pass that volume through. In the meantime, what that means is that it seeks a level, and so it works its way back up and began flowing north over this road. I think it was on the order of a foot and a half or so going over the road, and essentially filling in this volume here, working its way through this drainage path, and then coming into Point Pleasant up here at Fog Road. So you had these two areas where water just stacked up, moved north, and impacted the community, and that's why you had nearly identical storms once in January, once in February, so we saw repeat flooding.
It might be worth noting, too, that in both 97, 98, and also in 86, I-5 flooded.
Correct.
In fact, the first storm event, it was closed for three weeks, and then not that long during the 97, 98 event, but, and we were, as you'll hear from others, probably just a few hours away from that potentially happening again.
Correct. What we also saw, and this was in the February storm, this area here, this is land owned by the Nature Conservancy, it's the McCormick Williamson tract. On the McCombny River, they did experience a levy breach. So water from the McCombny River did flow into this island. The RDs actually had in advance planned to do a relief cut on the west end, south end of the island. So any water, should that situation have happened, which it did, the water would be able to flow back out.
It didn't happen in January, but.
Didn't happen in January, it did happen in February.
February, right.
And the purpose of that relief cut was, one, to ensure that water that got in could eventually get out, but also this island would fill up, and there was no relief cut. You have the risk of that down, that westerly levy failing catastrophically and impacting levies on the other side of the river, so.
Michael, was that a full levy breach?
Wasn't a full levy. I don't have the specifics on how deep and how wide it was, but it wasn't a full levy breach.
This wasn't the beaver going through the levy, was it?
I don't believe, I don't know that it was, I don't know that it was a beaver.
Okay.
Related issue, I think it was simply saturated and failed. And the engineer from McCormick Williamson, for the Nature Conservancy, they were monitoring this, so in talking with the adjacent reclamation districts, they did take some preventative action and began their relief cut as they were anticipating that levy did fail.
Because, you know, just as explaining, it backs up, and then when it does go, as we've seen in other storm events, is this big surge, and so then the downstream, both Tyler, but certainly Dead Horse Island to the south, to the west, can be impacted. But while it builds and builds and builds, and it backs up, and I think it held it, and one of the reasons in January, it held for the entirety of the storm event in January, and all that water went somewhere else, didn't, and again, this provides some relief, and if you do it soon enough, then that water can pass through before that volume continues to build. And again, there are people more expert than I am in the room that know it far better. But, and so I think part of the conversation has been is to maybe have some permanency to the lowering of that levy on the east side, so that when it got to a certain level, that you wouldn't have that surge, it would begin to fill, and you would account for that, both on the downstream, but certainly on the upstream side, and it might provide some additional relief, at least in certain storm events, for folks that were impacted this year and have been in years past.
Correct. And we'll speak a bit to McCormick Williamson, as I did speak with their engineer today.
Oh, you did, okay.
So I'll give you what was relayed to me in terms of what they may be proposing.
Okay.
They weren't able to.
So you'll do that before you conclude?
Yeah, they weren't able to be, but I'll speak to that in a moment. So as a result of the two storms this winter, the desire was to have us come back to your, come to your board with some recommendations, speak on the issues, speak on sort of the long-term, what's transpired, but also looking ahead, what can be done to provide some additional level of protection for the Point Pleasant community. And it's been recommended already that a flood fight type of activity should be carried out on Lambert Road with some sort of barrier to hold that water. As I mentioned, the water flowed north over Lambert Road, so what's been proposed is to have some sort of temporary barrier erected on Lambert Road to hold that water back to the south longer. You know, depending on what storm event, it may still eventually go over, but the idea is hold that water back longer before it might enter into the Point Pleasant area. So one of the recommendations from our staff is to actually to get direction to pursue formation of, or identification of the appropriate entity that might make sense to carry out such a flood fight activity, establish some entity that has authority to carry that out, has the discretion, the decision-making ability to carry something like that out. It's not, that Lambert Road is, there's a road, but there's no reclamation district that encompasses that location, so it would be a matter of identifying what would make sense, what would be supportable, and from a legal basis, what would be required to create such an entity, whether it's a reclamation district, a service district, or some other entity that could carry that out. So what we're asking is have us continue to pursue and identify what potential options there are for that. In addition.
Michael, if I could, just on that point, because again, I think this is an important juncture to point out, too, that flood fighting, using the public rights a way to accommodate that, there's two examples within our county in that part of the world. We, again, with the organized reclamation district with 2002, I don't know if you want to point that out on the map, but we allowed them, both this season and in past seasons, to put a flood wall constructed temporarily, berm over the Franklin Boulevard, and prevented water from flowing to that district, which would affect I-5 and other residences. And then also, again, on Tyler Island, on Walnut Grove Thornton Road, up by Juicedees, between there and Walnut Grove Marina, I think the state assisted the reclamation district there on Tyler Island in putting up an additional barricade along, what's a public road, is still privately maintained levy, but by the reclamation district. And so there is some actions that may be parallel, may not be exact in the circumstances, as you've outlined them, but, so I think part of this is that in certain flood events, what could be triggered, and then who would be responsible for doing that, and others will talk about that today, but I just, that's kind of the basis for the discussion here today, so.
Certainly. And both of those entities, their existing reclamation district, they'd carry those out, and, you know, that's one difference, is there is no reclamation district or similar entity here in Point Pleasant. We'd also like to, if directed, develop, I guess, a locally-based or a county-based home elevation program, utilizing Beach Stone Lake mitigation funds or other funding that we could identify aside from FEMA funding, only given the fact that we see that there are some limitations with FEMA grant funding, and to have an alternative in case FEMA grant funding does not qualify, you know, doesn't have qualifications that can be met, that if we can develop something that utilizes the Beach Stone Lake mitigation funds or some other funding source that might be appropriate, to have something locally based that would require that we develop the specific parameters for that kind of a program so that the Board could adopt that, but I think it would be, and the intent would be similar to FEMA in terms of cost share and contribution and how it would be carried out, but I think the specific issue would be, we would not have the federal B.C. benefit cost requirement, and we wouldn't have the prohibition on elevating a house on fill, because our floodplain ordinance does allow that. That's simply a FEMA preclusion. So anything that we would bring forward, we would want to ensure do not have those two constraints.
Let me just ask you on that real quickly, because I think it's a relevant point, too, where people are in their lives today, and we're going to see some pictures of that, is that folks, in most cases, are beginning to dry out, they've cut sheet rock and replacing floors and so forth, and maybe they've already getting ready to move back in. But in the event that folks were interested, I mean, there's this kind of window of time, practically speaking, when people have got their houses in some form of repair, and if they were to choose to do that, it's one thing to stay out of your house for weeks at a time or a month or two, which is a very long, but if waiting for us to engage in some activity that would have all these various elements, people are not going to stay outside their homes for a year or two waiting for us to figure something out. So I think, my point being here is that it may stress to the urgency, if we want to embark upon this, the reality of maybe even tomorrow, that may be a little too soon, but not too soon for some of the folks in this room, that if they were interested and there were some ability to qualify while they're already doing repairs to their houses, that in, you know, to then go for an approach that would allow them to raise it, whether it was on the foundation itself or in a pad up and to do that. And I guess the other thing is, is that, and this is where I think the county can be very helpful, is that for permit assistance, and it goes back on a disaster declaration where folks get the necessary permits and so forth, that can be rather onerous at times, too. The difference between raising and repairing might be thrown in certain categories, I know in the 97, 98 flood event, I'm familiar with that, that we assisted both homeowners, but certainly some of the districts we worked with, with some of that permit assistance, and I alluded to it on the roads a little earlier, but I think that's really important to consider, because there's a time sensitivity, not just from the standpoint of people having been flooded on two occasions or more, certainly two occasions this year, but if they want to make some repairs, they might be thinking about what options are available to them. They're not going to wait around till September, October.
Right.
For us to make a decision, so I think that's.
No, I think the intent would be to, well, as I put in the staff report, by June 6th to come back with some recommendations, but I think just in general, the thought would be mirror FEMA's program in terms of the cost, that process, with the exception of those two constraints on the benefit cost and the fill. And it may be that we identify some candidates who are willing to move now, and we simply bring some specific approval requests to your board to say, we'd like to move forward in this context, using this mitigation funding to support some home elevations. I know there would have to be some additional.
Yeah, you gotta have some criteria.
Context with that, but I think in general, without having the specific parameters of a program ready for you to adopt, I think we would look to, at least, here's the straw man, we'll have a couple of actual interested candidates.
Okay.
We're proposing to move forward, and get those adopted, and then that may be, we may make some modification to the program over time, but that at least would get it going. And as you said, you can only wait so long before you need to repair or do something else, so.
If they're displaced, they're not going to want to stay outside their house any longer than they have to, so, okay.
So I say that, the caveat is, we don't know exactly what, you know, what all the specifics would be, but I think we bring it back and we have that discussion with some actual candidates who are effectively ready to go and carry that forward.
Okay. Okay.
And in addition, we do believe that it's worth pursuing individual flood protection measures on a property-by-property basis, reaching out again if there's an opportunity to build a low wall or a berm, you know, protecting wells, it may be nothing more than that, that would be a significant improvement for a particular property. And I know there's constraints with folks, with cattle and things like that, so let us go back out and bring some of those back, specific proposals, rather than try to frame the entire program in advance, have that approved, then go seek out candidates. Let's bring some actual potential projects and properties to the board, say we'd like to approve this and this is why, and they could be, they could at least initially be dealt with on an individual basis and then I think from there we are, would start to be able to frame out a more established and long-running program.
Okay.
And associated with that, we would work, we would move to work with County Council's office to find a way to simplify where we can and make less constraining and you hold harmless agreements that are necessary for us to carry out improvements on private property. But the idea would be-
And I would just emphasize that, sort of talking to Robin and her predecessors have weighed in on this, but, you know, I think the time is long past about just talking about what we can do and why we can't, what we can't do, why we can't do it is to find a way and to help people. And again, the folks you're going to hear from today and that you see here that may not speak, and not unlike others who've been impacted by floods, but, you know, this is multiple times and, you know, historically, a lot of these areas didn't flood and they have, you know, the information that would show that and it's not just about, you know, the immediate moment, but I think the fact is, is that what we see, unless there's upstream or downstream, changes that, you know, the potential may continue to exist out there. So I want to find a way to be helpful and I know you do, Robin, as well, and not get caught up and we have to understand, you know, whatever exposure the county has, but, you know, these folks, a lot of them have farmed for generations and lived for generations in this part of the county and it's not just the flooding, the impact to their homes, but moving livestock, the disruption of their farming operations, the impacts to lands, the ability to, you know, move in and out of their living spaces and it really does take its toll on the people. And I've been on this board long enough to have had this conversation multiple times after the 97, 98. Some things have happened since then that, you know, certainly could be attributed in the positive column, but I think, you know, why we're here today and I preach my colleagues listening to the presentation and hearing from folks is try to find some pathways here that we don't get caught up over ourselves, you know, we can sit around and wait for the federal, state government to help us or tell us how things are done, but I think this is one of those where we may have some ability to help ourselves and be practical about it, certainly be careful of the public trust, especially invested here, both the fiscal but as well as the liability responsibility, but also be real about helping people and that's where I want to get to. I don't want folks to have to have, you know, come back here 10 years from now if they're still around and say, well, you know, we were there in 17, we're there in 97, 98, we're there in 86 and the county still hasn't done anything. That's not a very responsive government if that's what would happen 10 years from now. I want us to be in a different place a few weeks or a couple of months from now and again do what we can to make things better.
Well, I think as we seek out the recommendations, the direction as we've put in the staff report, it's from the perspective that, you know, the complexity of the setting is acknowledged. The multiple factors and multiple contributions and just multiple issues that affect and drive flooding in the community are understood. And as we move forward with any direction that we get today, it would be to not let that complexity make us reticent to move ahead. So as I suggested, maybe we would move with some candidates even before we framed out a full program, but let's have that framing done when we're ready to get somebody approved for funding so that your board can start to act on those.
Good.
So I think that's something that may, we may, you know, as we move forward, we can get some additional improvement and relief.
Right. McCormick Williamson, you're going to touch on that real quick?
Yeah, so-
You might get to the testimony here.
So I spoke with Gilbert Cosio. He's the engineer for the McCormick Williamson tract. This levy, again, this levy failed here, they did a relief cut on the southwest portion of the levy. McCormick Williamson had been pursuing a project to lower this east levy to a design elevation that would allow more frequent flooding of the island from a habitat standpoint. The storms beat them to it in terms of lowering the levy. However, the location of the breach is not where they would have intended to have a levy, a lowered levy for purposes of wetting the habitat on the island. Right now, the property owners are considering a couple of options as was explained to me. I think the ultimate option of reclaiming all those levies is probably off the table from what I discussed, that's probably not something that they're going to pursue. From there, it's most likely, again, as I spoke with Gilbert Cosio, they will very likely move to degrade the east levy down so that it will allow more frequent flooding of the island. And the benefit of flooding this island is that it does provide some relief as the water stacks up in this area. It does have some lowering impact on how high that stage can get. It depends on the volume of water, the timing of the flow, but we did actually see, and we could actually see it on our alert stream gauge system, when this broke, this levy did broke, we could see the rising water here actually started going down for a period of time. There was still more volume coming down, that it did go back up, but it did prove out that there was an effect of having water flow into this island during a large event that was of some benefit, however marginal it might be. But so that's something that if, as McCormick Williamson considers their options, very likely that they will degrade that levy and that will be something that will, on an ongoing basis, provide some relief in this part of the floodplain.
I guess I would just offer the comment that I offered earlier that while we're under disaster declaration windows and we still have the spring runoff and, you know, rivers are going to run high for probably some months, maybe there's some ability for some of the things they want to achieve out there that could be, you know, aligned very well with that, that might streamline their ability to do that, both for the remaining portion of this season but certainly going forward. And I think again, if we can be of help to that, Michael, I know certain water resources, we only have a, you know, we have a portion of kind of that overall look at that, but I do think that as we'll hear from folks, we've heard already that, again, the relief that comes from taking an approach that lowers that levy and allows that island to take water sooner rather than later would provide some level of relief and might help us, you know, avoid some of the consequences we've seen this year. So I would encourage folks again, while these windows are still there, let's look at them and, you know, because we're not, and certainly not out of the woods yet when it comes to even this season, so.
And next week is a meeting that is going to take place with the engineer, the adjacent RDs and the landowner for that tract of land to make a decision on which way they're, what they are going to move forward on.
So we'll keep people apprised of that then?
Absolutely, so I'm staying in touch with their engineer on that. And I'll leave this graphic up here for anybody to refer to it.
That might be helpful if people come to the podium, so.
If you have any other questions, I know that we've got-
Okay, well, we want to hear from folks.
Folks that want to speak.
We have at least one member of the board that has to leave a bit before 5:00, so I want to make sure we hear the public testimony and then we'll come back for staff direction and questions, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions at this juncture, otherwise we'll go into the presentations. I have about a half a dozen speakers and I know we have two graphic presentations and I had previously agreed with Mr. Hoppe who will speak on behalf of at least the broader community, to allow him 15 minutes, he has a PowerPoint that has a good number of slides, but I know he'll be able to move through that. And then we have other speakers, Pastor Neil Harrell and Wendy Wilkerson, Mary Hodge, and Diane Kirkham have signed up. If there are others that think they want to speak after that, certainly you're welcome to address the board, but I'll call Walt, come on forward Walt, and there's a PowerPoint if we can get that up. And I'm going to allot 15 minutes for his presentation and then we'll take the other comments and then we'll bring it back to the board for some further discussion, so. Walt, good afternoon.
Chairman, member of the board, Walt Hoppe, 11556 Fog Road, Elk Grove, California. I've lived in this area my whole life and seen the flood problem continue to get worse over time. I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation. If you have any questions, you can stop me and we'll discuss various points of this. If I can figure out how to work this thing.
Okay.
Does it work off of the mouse?
Let's see, I think Flo will help you there, Walt, let's see.
Does it have a pointer?
It does, but it doesn't really work on these screens.
It doesn't?
I'm sorry.
So this starts at, huh?
Yep.
Oh, okay, we're too far. There we go. Flood history of the Point Pleasant area. The Point Pleasant area did not flood under 1850 undeveloped conditions. Man-made changes to protect adjacent areas has shifted the flood problem to the Point Pleasant area. I have a couple of diagrams here to demonstrate that. The natural 1850 floodplain at Point Pleasant, Lambert Road. Point Pleasant is above elevation 10 and at elevation 10, from east to west, the delta, which would be a huge lake under those elevations, was 16 miles wide. You'd have, before the water could get to the community of Point Pleasant, you'd have a lake 16 miles wide to the west of us and probably 30 miles long and that's why they said California was basically a lake under those conditions. And this is based on the great flood of 1862, which I have spent a lot of time researching. What has happened is reclamation, first called swampland and now reclamation districts, have levied the, basically the whole delta and squeezed that large area into channels within levies. And in doing so, the water elevation raises and our little diagram here of Point Pleasant is now flooded from the higher water levels because it's tied down to the river through the Sacramento Drainage Canal and we also get water coming in from the north upstream from Morrison Creek. There is a Lambert Road flood control structure that's supposed to keep that water from backing in there, but during floods like we've had this year, the water runs over top of that flood control structure and I'll show you some photos of that later. This is an 1863 map when reclamation first started. They sold swampland plots and they couldn't reclaim them individually, so they passed a law to do it by district. And this is Swampland District 2, formed in 1861. It flooded in 1862. The red line is the high water line from the flood of 1862 and Point Pleasant lies just to the east of that line. Point Pleasant was already, they began to build homes in Point Pleasant already in 1852, so this flood came like 10 years later. When the Sacramento River levy was completed in 1866, it trapped water behind the levy because all the water north of Lambert Road used to flow to the Sacramento River. When the levy was built on the Sacramento River, it trapped the water behind it, so in 1868, state legislation, they built, passed and they built the Sacramento Drainage Canal, that's the blue line. It went from Sixth and Y Street in Sacramento all the way down to Snodgrass Slough and parts of that original channel are still in use today. It never would, never functioned because there wasn't enough elevation change between the north end and the south end and there were several lawsuits over it years ago in the 1880s and 1890s and the canal never really has worked and it still doesn't work and it is part of the reason for the overflow into the area because the water is not contained within that drainage canal. This map shows, a modern map shows the areas, shaded areas, those areas are reclamation districts and as you can see, the area that was in the floodplain in the delta is now levied and the white area, the Point Pleasant Franklin Pond area are not levied from the floodwaters. The upstream on Morrison Creek, there's 37 pump stations that pump into the Morrison Creek Basin and all of the reclamation districts adjacent to the area pump their storm water into our area also. So we not only get the water from the upstream area, we get it from the reclamation districts to the west and south and we also get consuminis macolomy water flowing up. This next map will show it a little better. This is the Beachstone Lake in the center there in blue and the Franklin Pond area off to the right. The consuminis and macolomy join together and because of the restricted channels, you can just see where it's blocked off by those reclamation districts, then the water backs up behind and flows north and some of it comes into the Point Pleasant area after it, the water goes north of Lambert Road. As Mike said, it also comes around on the west side and crosses over and runs over the Lambert Road flood control structure. We're also getting, all this time, you're also getting all the runoff from the Morrison Creek watershed, the 180 square mile Morrison Creek watershed. So the end result is about 65% of the water comes from the north and 35% is come from the south, which is consuminis macolomy water. So we're catching it from both ends and in the early 1953, they recognized the problem and had legislation passed to create the Morrison Creek Flood Control District and that had a whole bunch of components to deal with this flood, but the problem was none of them were built. In 1961, Sacramento County passed the Master Drainage Plan and this, that line on the top there is the Lambert Road flood control structure and they were going to, in that plan, they were going to raise the Lambert Road flood control structure so you would not have that reverse flow. There's a, it shows a high watermark there in 1958, I believe it is, is 12.7 feet. Well, that's been exceeded a number of times since 1958 and they were going to raise it like I think it says to elevation 13. It would have to be raised higher than that now and that is because the levies downstream have been raised higher, which creates higher water in the channels and then forces it back up on this area. That 1961 plan also had a 1,500-foot channel from the Morrison Creek area down to Lambert Road. Morrison Creek's on the left-hand side and Lambert Road would be on the right-hand side on this drawing. And that was to keep control of that water that came off of Morrison Creek until it got down past Lambert Road. That was never built either. Back in 97, we anticipated a flood, so we got in contact with some contractors and we got in contact with Sacramento County and we wanted to put a barrier across the Lambert Road flood control structure, but the county said no because of liability. And then somewhat later in August of that year- year, in a letter to Council Ryan, we talked about flood fighting and hit, as it says, "As you are aware, the current, the county refused to permit the erection of barriers on Lambert Road right-of-way during the last year's flood. The prohibition was based upon a determination that those barriers would divert water from its natural course and potentially damage other property. Certainly, the county should not permit the use of its property if it were to damage other property." Well, the fact of the matter, what the incorrect statement in that is that this water is not in its natural course. It was diverted, like I said, with the Sacramento Drainage Canal from the Sacramento River to the San Joaquin watershed. That channel was, that Sacramento Drainage Canal was 28 miles long. He also said in that letter, "An articulation of the judgment applied to permit or not permit flood fighting within public right-of-way, an assurance that such judgment is evenly applied," and that was in reference to the fact that others were putting barriers on county roads, but they wouldn't let us. Well, this contents of this letter has never been addressed. They, downstream, they still put barriers up to protect themselves, and we have never had any barriers in our area that would protect us. This is a picture of this year, January the 13th, of the water flowing over this 1,700 section, 1,700-foot section of Lambert Road. It overflowed for 55 hours, south to north, adding to the water coming off of the Morrison Creek and the water coming in from the east. This is the Lambert Road in the February storm. It overflowed for 83 hours, and you can see that water is fairly rapid, and it did quite a bit of damage to the shoulder of the road there. This was a little third spurt, it didn't get much, but it almost came, or it did come over a little bit in late February. Now, this is a photo of Franklin Pond is on the left, or the right, and the Beachstone Lake area is on the right, or on the left, excuse me. Franklin Pond is on the right, and Beachstone Lake is on the left, and this is a trestle that allows the Franklin Pond area to run into the Beachstone Lake area. This is just north of Lambert Road. South of this, on the railroad, the water was up to the rail and nearly washed the railroad track out. If that would have occurred, Interstate 5 would have been closed for several weeks. And they, up in the distance, you can see some trees up there, and there's at least one party here that lived in, up in that area, and their home flooded twice. This is the barriers that were placed on Tyler Island. You can see it was a county road, and the state provided those barriers, and the reclamation district placed about a half a mile of barriers as protection for their reclamation district. This is a barrier placed on Franklin Boulevard at the bottom of RD District 1002 to prevent water from running into their district. In both, in this case, the road was shut down for the period of time that the barriers were there. This is a photo of Hood Franklin Road and damage that occurred from that water that accumulated in the Beachstone Lake area. If the barriers would have been on Lambert Road, this probably would not have occurred because the water level would have been several feet lower.
Just by way of reference to this, estimated to be a $200,000 repair. We did temporary work here, it got flooded again in February, and we've got significant work to do along that. There's no shoulder left, there's portions along Hood Franklin.
I think there's some, it was estimated it's going to cost the county some $300,000 to repair that.
Yes.
This is some of the damage at Lambert Road. This was early, this was the January storm, so there is more damage after the February storm. Part of that has been fixed, but not all of it. This is monies that have been collected over time for the Beachstone Lake mitigation funds. The first four there are within Sacramento County, and the last one was from SAFCA, the Million Four. So, there's $9,242, $42,000 sitting there to do something with, but other than buying flood insurance, there has been no improvements to reduce the flood level in our area, which this money is supposed to do. This, it's kind of hard to read there, but this is, the state put up the money to acquire McCormick Williamson and Staten Island. They spent $35 million on Staten and $5.6 million on McCormick Williamson. And this is the location of those two tracks, McCormick Williamson, that's the one that the levee failed on this year. Staten Island is still complete, but to get the water out of this area, they're going, the state is going to have to do something, build some kind of a flood bypass or something, increase the channel capacity. They've looked at it for a long time, but nothing gets done. This is the plan for Staten, I mean for McCormick Williamson, to remove the east levee and the southwest levee and use it as a bypass. It's, that east levee is about 3,000 foot long, so it's, would increase the flow capacity considerably. This is the project on Staten Island, where they would basically do the same thing, take the north levee down and use it as a weir, and then about halfway down, they were going to put a levee across and have a pump station and also a weir down there for the water to flow out. Neither one of these projects have ever been built. This is the Morrison Creek watershed, 180 square miles, and it all drains out through that Lambert Road flood control structure. This is your SAFCA, South Sacramento Stream Project. Cost to build out is $100 million. It's about, I guess you've got 60 million or so of it's built out, still got some to When you break that down, of the 100 million, the federal government pays 65, the state pays 24, and the local share is 10, 10 and 1/2 million. Local share assessment per homeowner is less than $250 a year. Our flood insurance is skyrocketing. I've got an estimate for future flood insurance is going to be, at my home, will be $11,000 a year. So, these folks here that we took out of the floodplain don't need flood insurance anymore, and they get off for $250 a year. I've seen other policies as high as $4,000 already, and that flood insurance is something that's going to have a huge impact on the homes down there. This is a part of the SAFCA South Sacramento Streams Group's project, one of the upstream channels. You can see how wide that is to convey water down to the Beachstone Lake area. This is a project down on Tyler Island, where they raised Tyler Island, two to three feet in 2008, to protect that island. And this is the downstream side of the Lambert Road flood control structure. This is where all that Morrison Creek water has to go out. This channel was built in between 1868 and 1870, and it hasn't been improved since. The Lambert Road flood control structure, this picture was taken in 97, and it shows how high the water overflowed, the structure going from south to north. In conclusion, public agencies have spent hundreds of millions of taxpayers' dollars on projects to reduce flood risk to up and downstream areas. These same public agencies ignore the fact that these projects increase the flood risk to the Beachstone Lake, Point Pleasant, Franklin Pond area. The Franklin, the Point Pleasant-Franklin Pond area has become a flood retardation basin for the benefit of areas that's historically flooded. Displacing floodwater to the Point Pleasant-Franklin Pond area subjects the homeowners to ever increasing flood insurance costs, loss in property value, and unnecessary stress. What are the legal implications? So, that's the end of my slides. If you have any questions.
Okay.
Something has to be done to convey the Consumans McCollum water out of that area. The McCormick Williamson project will help, but that will move the problem further downstream, and then if nothing's done down there, a levee will fail down there, so. It's bigger than the county, but something has to be done.
Well, I want to certainly thank you certainly for the presentation today. I know you speak for a lot of folks, and that puts a lot on your shoulders, but you certainly are knowledgeable about not only the historical information, but about some of the real-time stuff that goes on certainly in January and February. I know we were in contact, and you were in, you know, Michael Peterson, you were talking, and again, I think the information you provide today is certainly good for helping us understand, certainly as a board, but as a county and a community that wants to help keep, you know, citizens safe, but also recognize that, you know, there are some things that we can't address, and I think you just said it a moment ago, and there are other things we're going to have to continue to, I think, impress upon our state and federal folks as much as we hope they will listen, but again, we are, certainly have the capacity here, I think, to, with today's discussion and the direction it comes out of today, and over the next, course of the next few weeks and couple of months, to, I think, hopefully set a little different course and provide hopefully some additional assurance that, at least in times of potential floods, that there's some safeguards in effect, because again, I think, as you pointed out, and as was pointed out in Michael's presentation, I mean, it can come from a lot of different directions. I mean, basically it can come from the south, and from the north, and from the east and the west when you're in Point Pleasant. I mean, it can come every direction, and there are other areas, obviously, down in the south county that continue to be impacted, and I'm hopeful out of today's discussion and the information you provided, as well as Michael and others that'll speak to it, that we'll get some direction here. So, again, I appreciate your diligence, and thank you on behalf of certainly your friends and neighbors, but of a lot of folks. You've been a good clarion voice, and certainly have held your government accountable, not just your supervisor, but others, and I appreciate that. That's been, it's helpful, and today's, I think, hopefully going to be an indication of our willingness to move forward and provide some relief.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Okay, so, in addition, Walt, then we have a few other speakers, and would ask Pastor Neil Harrell, and then Wendy Wilkerson, I think Wendy has some graphics, followed by Mary Hodge, and then Diane Kirkham. And if anybody else wishes to address the board, please get a speaker for them, otherwise those are the folks I have signed up, so. And Pastor's on his way down here, so.
Who's speaking?
Pastor Darrell's coming down.
Oh.
Yep.
He's slow.
I know he speaks well. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to the board. Thank you for the chance to address you. I'd like to introduce a little different angle on this. I hear about dollars and cents. For the last 20-plus years, I have had the pleasure of serving the Point Pleasant Church, which is a community hub, as the pastor, but along with that comes the responsibility to chaplain the community. I don't deal with a lot of dollars and cents in the community. I sense that as county staff and as county supervisors, you perhaps receive people's anger. I receive their anxiety and their brokenness, wondering whether they're going to be able to pay their flood insurance, tired of being out of their house again, scared they're not going to have a place to live in. I'd like to introduce the factor of human suffering here, which I don't know how you quantitate with dollars and cents, but there is a great sense of betrayal in the people in that area, feeling like they have been the sacrificial lamb so that other areas in the county can stay dry. That's not a good feeling, and I think it's a valid feeling, so somehow in here, there is some suffering that's redemptive. In other words, in other people who run, they run because they want to run and they get in shape, and so for their suffering, they receive something. There is no redemption in the flooding of the Point Pleasant area. There is no blessing in that. There's no upside. And so, for 20 years, I've listened to, "We're going to study this, and we're going to do that," but haven't seen anything done. I saw a house razed on Point Pleasant Road, a house. I'm going to ask you to somehow use your authority and your positions of power to take and relieve this bit of suffering that you can relieve, and I'm going to leave it at that, but somehow I'd like you to factor in the human suffering quotient into your equation as you decide what to do and when to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor, and I want to thank certainly the pastor and the church congregation. The church, the church property has served as a bit of a staging area, a place of refuge, obviously, for the ministry that goes on there, but certainly from the standpoint of some of the flood relief efforts, and I know it was, it was ground zero for some of the activities of the fire and rescue providers and so forth, but I want to thank certainly the pastor and the congregation. It is very much a part of the community and has, I think, to his plea, represents and reflects the concerns of the people here. Okay, Wendy Wilkerson, Wendy, and then you're followed by Mary Hodge, and I think Wendy provided this to us, so if you want to run through that.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy.
Our house is actually the picture that Mr. Hoppe showed from the Lambert and Franklin area.
Where the trees were there, by the trees?
Yeah, that's actually the first picture that I have for you guys. So, historically, we've lived in our house about 10 years now, and the flood record shows for the claims, our house did not flood in January or February, or, excuse me, in '86 or '97. However, this year, we did flood twice. Our house flooded above 2 and 1/2 feet each time inside our house, and the claim so far that we have with insurance is over $165,000. I have actually got my name on for the grant for raising our house, and when the county came out, they gave me a rough estimate of anywhere from $80,000 to $90,000 to raise our house. That's much lower than what we're getting in insurance claims right now, so I'd like to make that fact. I just really wanted to present these pictures to you, just so that you have a visual of what people are going through out there.
Wendy, and you can do that if you want to do it on that white space, if you want to show, everybody can see in the audience if that's comfortable for you to do that, right, this face up. There you go. Oh, turn around.
Turn around.
There you go, and they can zoom in on that a little bit, too, so.
So, the water was so deep out there, we actually, we had to boat into our house right here at the gates. It was up to my waist, so mud boots aren't going to do anything. We're checking through it. So, February, we were actually prepared. We took our kayaks and left them at a friend's house so we could get in and see our house. As we were boating in, just to see the property, and we'd actually, one of our dogs was scared, we had to go get him. This is what it looked like driving up, or boating up into our front house. This is our garage. We did lose one car. There was just my husband and myself. We had to get our cars out, our horse trailer with our animals, the horses and the goats, so we had to leave one car behind. This is our front door, and that's over two feet deep at our front door. Once we got inside our house, there was definitely water. That was almost a foot of water in our dining room, and this is our living room, and it was already up onto the first step of our floor, so the whole So the whole entire first floor of our buildings are gone. So once the water did receive, we had to start cleaning up. And we have almost up to five feet of drywall and everything below removed, all insulation. We have holes in our walls right now. Our electricity bill is about $750 now for the last two months, and we expect that again. And that's from running the fans, the dehumidifiers, tools. So that's something else. One thing I'd like to point out is, you know, when I tell people what happened, one of their first comments is, whoa, you have flood insurance. We actually pay for flood insurance. We're not in the tracks. So we pay almost $4,500 a month or a year in flood insurance. And flood insurance only covers structure. It doesn't cover things such as a pool being ruined. We just spent $8,000 on pool equipment this summer. That's gone. No, landscaping isn't covered. Our fences started coming down. That's not covered. The hay we lost, nothing like that's covered. So flood insurance definitely does not cover what we're going through. And just to kind of reiterate what, you know, other people have been saying already, I mean, we're expected to get more rain coming up in May. The National Weather Service is starting to predict it. And also, the Farmers Almanac is predicting it. I know it's not technically a scientific forum.
They've done pretty good over 170 years or however long it's been around, so.
They have, and they predicted it in January, and they have it here. It's a severe Pacific disturbance. February, they called it again, a powerful disturbance. And unfortunately, they have it listed in May again, saying strong disturbance coming. But in May, we're also going to have the heat and all our snow melt. So I'm very concerned of what's going to happen again in May. We're starting to rebuild, but if we're going to go through this again, what's the point? I'd like to see hopefully some action taken before then to help alleviate these waters. So, you know, at least by May, and then we'll have the summer to take even further action. We are hoping to build some our own levees or some ditches around our property, but we need time to do that.
Okay.
So that's basically it, what I wanted to share. And my conclusion follows what, you know, Mr. Hoppy has been saying. Historically, this town was built. People knew what they were doing, and these houses did not flood. My house does not have a history of flooding, and this year, we're flooding twice. Something's changed. And Mr. Hoppy made a really good point about what needs to be done and why it's flooding. So please take some action and help us out.
Okay. Thanks Wendy. I would just, as we talked earlier, when Mr. Peterson was making his presentation, the opportunity, if we were to get into either house raising or some other protective measures around properties, again, to act quickly. And again, I know you're outside the Beachstone Lakes where that mitigation fund is there, but I mean, if there were some localized effort, again, it would obviously require action by this board. But it sounds like you might be interested in doing that. I don't know with your reconstruction, whether it would be timely enough if, you know, the house raising certainly, you know, would have some expense on the homeowner's part. But like you say, with the insurance claim, you're going to have double that, it sounds like, just with the damages this year or so.
Well, and right now, it's the perfect time while we have everything removed. I've talked to our contractor about it. I mean, it's out of my cost to do it without a grant, but once we do raise it, are we going to have to redo all the painting, all the floors, the electrical again? So right now is the perfect time to get this done.
Okay. Maybe, again, I know you're here for the hearing. We've got a couple more speakers, but before you leave today, maybe we get Michael and some of his folks to talk with you and kind of, again, I think there are others that may want to do that as well, and we don't have to do that at the podium. But certainly interested to see if we can't figure something out to help some folks, so.
Thank you.
Good, thank you so much. Okay, I have two more speakers, and I have Mary Hodge and Diane Kirkham. Mary? And again, if anybody wishes to speak after the two of them, please feel free. Good afternoon, Mary.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry, this makes me weepy.
It's okay.
Wendy did a great job of explaining what it's like out there when you sit in your house and watch the water creep up to your home and you don't know how to stop it. That's the terrible part. We really had very little support in trying to resolve problems, too. Thank God for Bud Hoppy. He told me how to get my water tested. I called the county and someone came out and tested my well water today. I'm thankful for that. And it's true, flood insurance does not cover a lot of things in your, around your property. Our corral blew down. They don't cover that. Trees fell, but they didn't fall on a structure, so there's no help for cleaning up the mess. We have borders that were raised by the water and moved, you know, the wooden borders that you have around a garden and that sort of thing. They moved, and I don't know where they floated.
Somebody else got them downstream?
Yes. So somebody else got some borders. This year has been worse than '97, I believe, because it did happen twice. We have, they turned our electricity off with no notice, and we were, I believe, two and a half days without electricity. Thank God for friends who loaned us a generator so that we were able to at least keep our refrigerator and our freezer from losing our food.
Mary, can I just ask you on that? So SMUD turned the electricity off, and was that based upon them making some judgment that the house wouldn't be safe, or what?
I don't know exactly what happened, but I've been told, someone from the county told SMUD to turn it off. And then I heard that a fire, a fireman told them to turn it off. And trying to reach somebody to get someone out there to turn it back on or to tell the SMUD people to please turn it back on, I called one county office, and the person who was supposed to be there said a message, they weren't there. I called another county office person, and they said, oh, sorry, it's a holiday. That was the message. And it's like, okay, so I'm without electricity and you're having a nice holiday. That's great. When I finally did reach someone, they came out and they called SMUD. And the gentleman said he didn't really see why the electricity needed to be turned off in the first place. Because our home wasn't threatened as far as electricity, you know, with the water causing a problem with the electricity.
Even though it's after the fact, I guess I'm going to ask, I know Steve Cantelmo is here from our, our Office of Emergency Services and kind of has the umbrella relationship as it relates to county departments. And because, again, I'm familiar enough, having visited with some of you in the audience and others that aren't here, that I know that, you know, with farms and ranches and houses, you know, as long as, you know, you know, the panel's not sitting in water, although I think that electrification's important, one for other purposes, including milking cows and getting, you know, other, and getting, keeping water on. So in the event there was a fire, that, you know, your wells couldn't operate in your pump. So I don't know what judgment calls were made in the field, but Mary, again, without getting into too much detail on that point, if you'll share your address, I mean, I've got it here, but.
Oh, yes.
And Steve, this is something we need to take a look into, because that type of disaster response, people may think they're doing it in the best interest of folks, but if somebody made that call, and then you get the normal interruption of trying to get through to, you know, the SMUD or whatever, and then you're probably talking about Lincoln's birthday that was the holiday on the 13th of February.
Yes, that's it.
So meanwhile, people are without power for two and a half days, and that's just one more inconvenience and burden that gets put on folks.
Right. Like you say, the well, there was no, we had no water.
But again, you're the first one that's told me that they actually came out and shut the power off to their house without their, somebody requesting that or some imminent safety issue. And I just don't, okay, I don't want to belabor, but that's an important point, so continue.
Right. It's 3128 Point Pleasant Road.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay.
I didn't want you to put it over, you're fine, so it does, everybody knows where you live now. But anyway, we'll run that down so we can figure it out.
Okay, I appreciate that. And one of the other things is, we really need a cargo container, one of those big dumpsters, to put all of the garbage in and the stuff that's been destroyed. And I don't think insurance covers that either. So that's just a final footnote. And I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I just would maybe turn to you, and Diane Kirkham was next, but one of the things I know we did in '97, '98, and certainly in '86, when we had bass flooding out in the north area and certainly in the south area as well, as part of the county response, and I don't know whether we were to claim for it, but we brought some dumpsters in that allowed folks, again, it wasn't just a free dump day, but it was, you know, because people had had debris and they were gutting their houses and restoring their ranches and farms and, you know, places of business in some cases, that we provided that. And, you know, that was just part of the county helping out some of our folks. And it's just, again, it's one more thing on top of it. And I don't know whether, you know, again, some folks have already begun to do that, may have, you know, they're pretty industrious and resourceful and they have, you know, but I trust that that would be very appreciated. And I know we did it in Rio Linda in '86 where we had, you know, major flooding, and we did it in some of the southern portions of the county in previous flood events. So maybe this is something we can arrange for, we do it for neighborhood cleanup, but maybe our solid waste department, those are franchised areas, working with our contract haulers, can make arrangements in some of these communities that are affected and get some notice out, you know, wait till the sun's out for a couple of days, but help people clean up that way, too. It would be very helpful, so, okay. Okay, Diane, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Diane Kirkham, and I live on Twin Cities Road between Bruceville Road and Franklin Boulevard, which is just southeast of the Point Pleasant area. Our area is sometimes called the Franklin Pond area by water resources officials. I have two recommendations to make to the board. Number one, will you please help the flood victims of Franklin Pond area, too? I commend the board for the attention that it is focusing today on our friends and neighbors in Point Pleasant, but please don't forget Point Pleasant's ugly stepsisters. That's those of us who live east of the tracks of the railroad tracks.
Those are your words, Diane. I wouldn't call you ugly stepsisters.
Yeah, it's pretty close. And in the Franklin Pond area. We suffer floods, too, as you've heard testimony here today, and often at very high levels. While I understand that we don't qualify for the special mitigation funds that are set aside for the Point Pleasant community, it seems only reasonable that the county would consider our needs in the Franklin Pond area when discussing, for example, possible changes to the FEMA home elevation program that might better suit some of the conditions in our South County area. And we'd just like you to keep us in mind. And certainly, that's not a request to stop the urgent need to take actions that you can take in Point Pleasant with any of those special mitigation funds that are available there. And the second point I'd like to make has also been addressed by a number of your other speakers, and that is that I urge the county to urge nature conservancy to proceed post-haste with the long-promised modifications to the McCormick Williamson tract. I'm sure most of you know that the McCormick Williamson tract was acquired by the nature conservancy almost 20 years ago, but actually under a grant given to them by the federal and state government. And they have been using that intervening time of almost 20 years to plan and plan and plan, a project that I think most of its neighbors, maybe all of its neighbors, are eager to see implemented, and that is both a flood improvement project as well as a habitat restoration project. You've heard some testimony about how it would lower, that project would lower levees, particularly on the east end. And that is something that we believe would dramatically improve the flood safety in our area Franklin Pond and also in Point Pleasant. The waters would be able to flow through more easily and on down to, on down further into the Delta. Sadly, these improvements just have not been done in the intervening 20 years. But we have been told by hydrology experts that once they're implemented, the flood levels at Benson's Ferry Gage, and that's the gage there right at the confluence of the Consumnes and McColmey, would be lowered by as much as two feet in these major flood events. And that would dramatically lower the flood dangers in both Franklin Pond and Point Pleasant areas. We believe we had actual tantalizing proof of this favorable effect when the levee in McCormick Williamson overtopped this February 11th, 2017. The upward progression of the floodwaters at Benson's Ferry stopped almost immediately after the 8:00 AM overtopping of that levee. And I think your staff person said they stopped, went down, went back up. That was not our experience at Twin Cities Road. Our experience, and if you look at the actual readings at Benson's Ferry Gage, they, the readings stopped at that level of levee break, stayed there and began to, and consistently went down from there. And that's despite the fact that the California Nevada River Forecast Center, at that very moment of the levee break, was predicting the water would still go up by another six inches, a half a foot. That didn't happen. So we think that providence was on our side in the case of Mother Nature overtopping that levee and allowing the water to go on through. And we'd like to see that the nature conservancy acknowledged that Mother Nature is leading the way and not restore that levee. And I'm encouraged by the staff report that perhaps they're leading in that direction. I simply encourage the county to use its good offices to encourage they move in that consistent direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, let me ask, anyone else wish to address the board here this afternoon? I would thank all those who've spoken. I think you actively obviously speak for those that are, others that are here that haven't spoken, and certainly a whole lot of other folks that have been impacted lots of different ways. So with that, then I'm going to bring it back to the board, first for questions, and then some closing comments by you. And I think you had some direction from board members. I've got some things I want to offer, but I like to hear from my colleagues. Again, this is a lot for one afternoon, but I think it serves, again, gives us some of the depth and breadth of the impacts and what some of the opportunities are to maybe make a difference here. So are there any questions by colleagues? All right. All right, well, then let me, now, do you want to sum up something? Then let me, I want to offer some things here, I think, certainly in light of what we heard. Part of it, I think, speaks to the urgency, which I guess can maybe be a bit exaggerated in the sense that, you know, there was urgency in '86, and there was urgency again in '97, and here we are today, and we've had two flood events in 2017. And, you know, those, you know, intervals of time don't really give, I think, the sense of impact nor a really, people have a very good feeling, certainly from this part of the world, anyway, in Sacramento County, that there is much urgency. And yet, I think today's staff report reflects a good bit of different direction than what obviously some of the discussion, and many of you have been here over those years in these chambers back after the '97 events, when there had been a request to flood fight, but also what was going to be the level of relief and assistance that might be made available. And I think now we have the opportunity, one, to address the issue of, you know, the ability to flood fight on Lambert Road in light of a whole litany of things that have been discussed over the years, even with my predecessor Toby Johnson. And going back, as Walt pointed out, probably to, you know, the 1950s coming forward, the ability to offer some level for that community at that location, anyway, to have the same opportunity to provide some level of protection that recognizes a more imminent and more urgent situation of flooding. And I think that the need to figure that out is upon us. And, you know, the fact that people have been promised in the past through development approvals and through actions of this board going back some 30-plus years, that we were going to, you know, do an improvement on Lambert, or we were going to put, you know, additional levees in, or we were going to put pump stations, but yet developments continued upstream and other things that happened, both upstream in the Consumnes and McColmey watersheds and downstream in portions of the Delta, that continue to impact these areas. And so I, for one, would want to make it very clear that, and I've said it to some of the folks that have spoken here today and to others, that I think were long since passed, you know, saying, well, you know, you've got to do something different. You have to have a reclamation district or some other entity, or you can't flood fight on Lambert Road. I think that's not the attitude you bring here today, and I am encouraged by that. I think that's not the attitude you bring here today, and I am encouraged by that, so I'm going to ask that we pursue, you know, and with a formation of an entity, I think we certainly could talk to SAFCA about this, I would like to have that conversation, see if they'd be interested, but if not, I don't want to get all hung up on, you know, what it is and what this looks like, it needs to be an entity that, you know, certainly has the ability, and whether it's locally driven, or by virtue of some branch of a county entity, or some other independent entity, to have in place the ability to flood fight at that location, and with the Beachstone Lakes mitigation funds that are available, I think the ability to do that, wherewithal, if there's some sort of liability coverage and/or capital improvement, or some structural contribution needs to be made, the funding is there, I think that was clear in the staff report, so I, for one, support that, and, but I think it then goes to the broader question, what we can do in the area that may be outside of that, as it relates to allowing folks outside of an emergency situation to then look to the county to be a partner in either providing some additional protection around their homes, and/or raising their homes, or doing some things that, again, would be funded either through the funds that are available here, and/or another identified source for those that would be outside, and maybe we do a package where we have, and I know that in years past, in some of the other watersheds we've worked, maybe we had some other funding sources available, too, is to really allow, it doesn't speak to the inconvenience and disruption in people's lives of having moved livestock, of having their surrounding environments flooded and being displaced from their homes, but if it doesn't get into their house, at least that's one less thing to have to cope with, and so I think offering some level of protection around the properties, around the homesteads, around the homesites, in addition to the broader issue of flood fighting at Lambert, needs to be something that we have a good degree of urgency to. I spoke to that earlier this afternoon, that you've got folks that have their houses halfway torn apart already, maybe there's an ability to look to some of those situations and actually work with them this spring to achieve some of those, you know, improvements that may not have been anything they anticipated doing, but we can be the, you know, be a partner that can bring the resources to the table and do something that would be streamlined and be effective in allowing us to address that, because frankly, I don't see that, certainly with the upstream watershed, and the fact that when you get the reservoir system, it gets full, and the, you know, Casumnes comes down, or whatever comes in that watershed, and the McCombey, they continue to spill that system, and then with downstream improvements where people have taken, you know, advantage of opportunities to improve their resilience, it relates to levees, and you have constrained channels, that we're going to, you know, be out of the woods anytime soon with the types of storms we're seeing, so I would want to help people to protect against and guard against, you know, flooding in their homes and around their farmsteads, if there's ways to do that, you know, from a practical standpoint, and to hopefully have a way, Robin, that we can do it with the ease of something that may be a whole harmless, but the other one, again, recognizing that the county represents a whole lot of folks and a whole lot of interests, but to actually help people, you know, work through this, and to be a partner in that, recognizing that they, they too pay taxes, they too make their lives here, and contribute to the economy and to the life of our communities, and I think Pastor Harold said it very much, is that, you know, we don't wish this upon anybody, but this, these are our residents, the folks we represent, and I think we have an opportunity at this juncture, having learned some lessons and experiences we've come through, to make a difference and to actually go into action. I guess another part of this I would ask, and again, this is an urgent item, I spoke to it a moment ago when Mary Hodge was here, but I think, you know, environmental management has been a good partner out there in testing the wells, kind of a little bit of rough start on that, but we've done that, I want to thank OES for certainly being responsive and giving notices to folks, but now that hopefully the worst of the season has passed, how do we help people recover? And I would say that if there's an ability to streamline any permits that are needed relative to building permits or whatever, but also with the neighborhood cleanup, you know, I say cleanup, but to provide some opportunity, and maybe it's just for folks that have, you know, flooded houses or farmsteads and so forth, that we can provide them the opportunity to, you know, access to, you know, the county landfill, or, you know, have a prescribed point where we could, you know, work with folks on a given day or course of a couple of weeks to do that, because I think that, again, shows good faith that, you know, again, it doesn't alleviate the pain and suffering, but it also, I think, helps people rebuild and to recover, and so, again, that's the here and now, but I think going forward, I would expect that in June, you're going to have a proposal that will have us with whatever structure we think we can go forward with, and I would just say keep it as simple as possible, with something that is real and practical for how you flood fight at Lambert Road, and what sort of, you know, criteria, because the last thing you want to do is trap water in if it was going to flow out, but I think the chances of that are pretty remote, and, you know, let's utilize the dollars we have available to us to help folks, both with their immediate needs, but also with the, you know, if they choose to raise their homes or protect their homes in a way that's going to give them more protection from what's been, you know, twice this season, hopefully the last, there's only two times this season. So we have a staff report here, I think, but, you know, coming out of that, I'd like this to be innovative, to be nimble, and to, you know, take that sense of urgency that really, I don't think, it gets lost when the sunshine comes out, gets sunny for a few days and gets 80 degrees out there, and people, you know, that was, you know, that's all in the past tense, it's not. These people have lived it and lived it on a number of occasions, not unlike others in our communities, but I think that we can be a much better partner here and utilize the funds that are available to us, and take some of the strategies that Michael, again, I think your department have outlined here, let's be creative, and let's, you know, just fulfill some of the promises that heretofore were made, probably with good intent, but never were delivered on, unless this time, let's see if we can't make a difference and help folks, help themselves, so that's kind of where I'm at. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to ask one quick question regarding Franklin Field, so this is just, we're just talking about Stone Lake, Point Pleasant, are we talking about Franklin Field also, or are they included in this recommendation?
They're not with... Well, in terms of the specific Beachstone Lake mitigation boundary, no, but in terms of just in general, trying to find ways to assist that we, that perhaps we haven't been able to before, yes, we'll include that in the context of what we come back with.
Okay, thank you.
And I think any disaster funds, I said this earlier in the afternoon, but if we can claim, I mean, if you've driven the roads down there, none of them are going to win any awards to begin with, but I can tell you now, they're going to get the, make it the award for the worst road in the county before we're done, so, and in all seriousness, though, again, we need to be assertive about that and make sure that we can fix, because some of those roads were underwater for days at a time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that took time out of their day to be here. I know this is an important subject to many of you, and there's obviously a lot of continuing grief and uncertainty over the whole situation. I do want to also take the opportunity to thank my colleague, the Chair, Mr. Nativi, I think, over the last several weeks, perhaps unbeknownst to some, but certainly not to this board member, you've certainly taken this situation extremely seriously, making time to, in some cases, try and be three places at once, including down near some of these flood fight situations, so certainly want to make note of the fact that you've not only heard from staff and received your briefings from staff and done your homework here at the County Admin Building, but you've been out in the field, literally, at some of these communities, to see for yourself what's happening to these property owners, so I want to express my thanks for his leadership on that front, and again, to everyone that has taken time to be here to express your ideas and your concerns, it's not lost on any of us how important this is to you, so, thank you.
All right, Nav, do you want to really sum up? You got June 6th, but again, that's sunny weather, so in the meantime, could we, again, if we're able to instigate something pretty quickly here, again, notice to property owners, we need to have a community meeting, we've done that in the past, kind of talking about, you know, planning and cost benefit and so forth, but, you know, if we're going to be innovative here and capture the moment, that's what I'd like to see us do, relatively, at least some of the individual property owners here, the, you know, the flood fight portion, you're going to need a little bit of time to put that together, to come back and have whatever criteria would apply, but I think from the standpoint of some of these individuals, and whether they're in the Beachstone Lakes mitigation fund area or outside of that, to see if we can't figure out something that would allow them to, you know, again, raise their houses if they so choose, or find some level of protection around their properties, because we're seeing areas that haven't historically flooded, not in some of the large events we've seen, you know, in the last 30 years, so, yeah, Michael.
Yeah, I think, as you said, the June 6th date is, you know, sort of report back by, but the expectation is that some of these things will come back to your board sooner than that. In particular, I would suggest that we'll focus on specifically folks who have flooded in terms of trying to find a way to expedite some sort of locally supported elevation, and, again, I think it's more of an approach of, let's figure that out for these specific cases, and then bring that back to your board, versus trying to frame the full breadth and width of a program for adoption, and then that would get the momentum moving on those cases, and then from there, we look at comprehensively, how will this program sustain and continue to move forward?
Could you maybe identify, maybe this is not a good example, but maybe a flood response team, again, to your point, okay, we've got X houses that have flooded this time, and some of those folks spoke here today, and if that was going to be the first order of business to see, while they're reconstructing, repairing and so forth, what we can do to assist them in that regard, and certainly the broader communities in cleanup, but, you know, assemble, you know, your building inspectors, your, obviously, your finance folks, you got to see George Booth here, thank you, George, for your work, we're going to trust you're going to be creative and get, help us figure this out, and really, again, focus in on this, so people go away today, and they'll say, well, you know, he talked about down at the board again, and, you know, maybe we'll hear from him by June or not, that we are going to be out, you know, be out there, meeting with folks, some we've heard of, others that are identified here, and see what we can do to put something together, he could maybe be back to us in a few weeks' time, I would trust, I mean, there's some money available here.
I'm not following the request, are you asking us to, we have a date that we want to come back to you on June 6th, on the problem that we have at hand?
That's on the flood fight piece of it, which is not unimportant, and I don't want to diminish that, but I, I'm talking about situations that are individual, where somebody's got their walls stripped down, and they're going to get their floors out, and maybe they might be interested in, with the right opportunity, to raise their house and do it now, rather than to put their floors down.
Absolutely, no, we'll, yeah, we'll take care of that.
So that's what I'm talking about.
That's what Michael's saying, we'll do that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, we're not going to wait till June 6th, I think there's a couple of times I've heard that we came down and they heard us, and I don't know how else to, I mean, you've articulated what we're working on, Michael's articulated it, we're committed to this, otherwise we won't be sitting here today, having this discussion. I don't know why it didn't happen in the past, I wasn't here, so, our commitment is, we're going to give you something by June 6th for you all to vote on it, and then we get our direction from that. In the meantime, if there are items that we need to help them with, absolutely, we're going to be there, and OES is here, everybody else is here, we'll help. The lady that spoke, that the county office was closed, that's unfortunate, we're going to follow up what happened, but we have a whole protocol that we get set up in emergency situation. It should not have happened.
That's fine. No, I think, Nav, my point was, is that some of this, you know, on the individual, again, if you need authorizations to work with individual property owners, you know, for a, if it's a grant program, it's a loan program, if we're able to develop some, you know, way to address it, maybe it's under your authorities, but if it needs to come back sooner, it doesn't have to wait until June, that's what...
Absolutely, no, we will not wait.
Yeah, and to what you opened that comment with, I'll organize a huddle with building department, emergency, Office of Emergency Services, Waste Management, as well as Transportation and Water Resources staff, but then, yeah, we can assemble folks who, the intent would be this, but they work on, moving forward.
All right, and I trust folks that are here that are, obviously, are all interested, but if you've been impacted in that way, and, you know, or want to, you know, know what the options are, but I think beyond what's been presented previously, I think you're going to see some innovation here to try to, you know, figure out ways to help you, you know, rebuild and repair, and you're going to, you know, take on some of these issues head-on, so, okay, that's, you know, I take that as our commitment here today as we leave this today, so, okay, well, I'm prepared to move to staff recommendation, I've noted some items, do you need anything else framed up for direction then, Mr. Gill?
No, thank you.
All right, okay, well, again, then I would move the staff recommendation, which is developing the parameters for certainly more than that, we may be already into a county-based home elevation program that could act very quickly, investigate certainly the formation of an entity that would do the flood fight, and what physical improvements would be required to do that on Lambert, and then obviously coming back to this board with action items on June 6th, with some other follow-on efforts, so.
Second.
Okay, all right, please vote.
The motion passes, and Supervisor Peters is absent.
Okay, all right, well, I want to thank you all for being this, certainly making the trip down here today, and if you want to talk individually with any of our folks, Michael and others will be available here in just a moment, so, and have a safe trip back home. Thanks. All right, we just have appointments, that's all, again? Okay, one other item, very quickly?
We have our nominations, you are, this is item 29, you are continuing to April 11th, the Assessment Appeals Board...
Excuse me just a second, if you could just take the conversation out to the foyer, we're still in session, we'll be done here in a moment, but I know people want to talk to our folks, so we just got to keep it down so we can finish the order of business. Thanks.
I don't think they heard you.
Okay.
They don't care.
Okay, you are continuing to April 11th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, and the Sacramento County Youth Commission, and for your items today, the Adult and Aging Commission, Chairman?
Go to the next one, I got to get my item here, just keep going.
Pardon?
Take the next item, I got to, I got to, just give me a second.
Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council?
District 3, so.
I'm not sure if she transferred her notes.
No, I didn't have that.
Okay.
Okay, Adult and Aging, recommended we continue this to March 21st, but they closed the filing for the commission, so that's the recommendation. They're still doing interviews.
We will pass on the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, we'll pass on Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, next would be Children's Coalition?
The recommendation by the Chiefs, they're still doing interviews, continue that to March 21st.
Okay, and we will pass on the Fur Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, and then we have the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue April 11th.
Okay.
Patrick, you okay with that, too?
Say the same thing, continue April 11th.
You're okay with that, okay, and that concludes your nominations.
All right, very good. All right, that can take care of the order of business, any adjournments, comments by supervisors? No? Mr. Acting County Executive?
No comments on behalf of Mr. Gill.
Okay, all right, and then that does conclude our order of business today. Thank you all, and we'll stand in German.